Yes, please take names and addresses.
Jonathan, you look like you're up to something.
Just waiting for those little digits to flip over to seven.
I was just saying I have all my paper copies of stuff. I was looking for the digital copies on the website.
And you know where to look for those?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Maureen, you can hit the record button.
I've done so. Thank you.
Great. Okay, so the planning board meeting for April 21st is hereby called to order. This is a remote meeting. As a result of the COVID-19 virus, the planning board will conduct the meeting via remote access as provided by main law. The planning board will use the software Zoom meeting to conduct the meeting and to allow the public to remotely attend and participate. The Zoom software will allow all planning board members, applicants, and members of the public to hear all discussion and hear votes, which will be taken by roll call as required by law. So the first item, oh yeah, so before we leap into that, so Maureen, on my screen, I can see down to about the phone number for the webinar ID that begins 215. One of the things I was reading about Zoom is that since everybody has different sized screens, you can't, you're not necessarily seeing the exact same view that Maureen is, has on her laptop. So if you feel like you're not seeing something, just speak right up, okay? Make sure we know that. So first item on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes for the February 24th meeting. Does anybody have any comments or questions about the minutes?
Would you like a motion?
Um, yes, hold on, I can't see. Let me just switch to gallery. Okay. Uh, yes, I'd like a motion and remember that the votes are all roll call votes.
Right.
So go ahead, make your motion.
Motion that we accept the minutes of the February 24th, 2020 meeting as submitted.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, that was Jim Hubner.
No.
I think it was Peter.
Peter, okay, great. Uh, go ahead and take the roll call vote, please, Maureen.
Diane Podolski?
Yes.
Peter Currie?
Yes.
Andrew Gilbert?
He's muted.
Andrew, you need to turn your mic on. You're muted. Do you vote to approve the minutes? Thank you. Jim Hubner?
Yes.
Carol Anne Jordan?
Yes.
John Sarbeck?
Yes.
And Joe Shalat?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, the next item, I wanted to discuss Pete Currie's letter. I think it would be good to discuss a couple of things, especially the site visit question before we go through the items that may or may not require a sidewalk on our part. So Maureen, how would you like to start on this? Can you bring up Pete's letter? Has everyone read it?
Yes, it was great. It was a great email, Peter, very thoughtful.
I was gonna bring up the digital submission document that you already have, but I can bring up his letter. That'll take another moment.
I've got it here if you want to throw it over to me.
I can throw it over to you, no problem. Well, I could throw it over you. I'm not gonna say no problem.
You two are getting good at this.
Before all.
You are viewing Maureen's screen.
And.
You are the host now, okay, so. Yeah, yeah, screens not liking this totally.
I just had a chance to skim through it before I signed into the meeting, so I didn't read it closely.
Okay, can people see that?
Yes.
That's good.
All right. Is it too wide?
It's too small.
Very small.
Type's too small.
Okay, let's try to zoom.
There you go.
All right, how's that? Can everybody read that?
Yes.
So the first item, public. So I, as I recall, on the first time I did this, I was having some trouble seeing when hands were raised. And I don't seem to have that part of the screen right here. So I think the idea of people just raising their hand or even just calling out, I think, would be fine for now. Might be able to perfect that later, but I don't really have a problem with that.
You mean raising our hands the way Peter suggests in the video or?
Well, you have the hand clicker, but like I don't see it on my screen right now. If somebody raises their hand, I can't see it.
Yeah.
I don't have it. I don't either.
You, you would have to get.
Invite the C raised hand.
You would have to get down to participants icon.
So who's ever invite the C, you, I saw you raise your hand, so that's good. Andrew, why don't you try raising your hand a second?
Well, I was able to do it last week.
Jim Hubner raised his hand. Okay, so it's coming up on my screen. Are you seeing that, Maureen? Two participants. Okay, everyone's raising.
Yes, I'm seeing it.
All right, so.
I don't have it on my control.
Yeah, I think you do. You gotta go down to participants.
It's under the little dots where it says invite mute me and then there's.
Oh, got it. Okay, got it. I'm sorry, you're right, absolutely. Yep, I just raised my hand. Okay.
All right. Oh, I see. Okay, I got the panels. All right, great. So, but again, you know, if you raise your hand and nobody calls, just, I think we're gonna have to just jump in. All right. Interactive will also be tricky. All right, sidewalks. Maureen, you wanna review what you told me about the sidewalks?
Okay, yes, so kind of a question came up of how you're gonna handle sidewalks. And so I threw it out onto the Main Association of Planners listserv to get some feedback from other planners in the state. And kind of what we came up with was that I think you can hold a sidewalk. We would absolutely have to follow CDC guidelines, which means that everyone would have to wear a mask. Every woman have to stay at least six feet apart from each other. And I think we would have to close it to members of the public because you can't have more than 10 people at a gathering. However, if you videoed, by you, I mean me, if I were to take a video of the sidewalk that you conducted, I could then put it on the website, and by that I mean the webmaster would put it on the website. And that sidewalk would be available for the public to see. So that seemed like an option, but the question, you know, does become, and this was raised, is how comfortable the board would be with that. I mean, obviously you are getting together and we have to maintain our, our, our distance. Another option would be just to have me go and do a site visit. I'm thinking that has less value for you.
Maureen, Jonathan raised his hand.
I did see that, yes.
Oh, okay.
Obviously, yeah, the 10 people guideline would be sort of the thing that would make it difficult. Would we only need to videotape if we got to the point where we invited the public, but some members of the public didn't show up and didn't get to that 10 person threshold and then recording?
The way I counted, yeah, the way I counted it up was there are seven members of the board plus me, that's eight. And the applicant would be limited to two representatives. That gets you to 10.
Oh, yeah, okay, so it's the same.
And then, and then the idea would be that the, the public is just not gonna be allowed to attend. But we would videotape the entire site visit and post it online so that the public still has complete access to the site visit that you conducted, which in, in, in a lot of ways is more access than they have for your site visits now because only the people that attend get to hear what's discussed.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
Jim raised his hand. Jim?
Yeah, who's gonna video it? And that would add one more person if you got a separate.
No, that would be me.
Okay.
Because we can't add another person, yeah.
Let me just make a statement here because I noticed that some of the participants are raising their hand. And the participants have a chance to make comments during public comment and public hearing. But other than that, we don't normally invite the public to participate in the discussion. If you can, any questions or comments you have on particular issues, you can definitely email Maureen and she will make us aware of those items. Peter?
Yeah, Maureen, as I was trying to think this thing through, I think we have to also anticipate this will be a little bit of a moving target and requirements. And while the 10 person rule is certainly in the, in effect for the moment, I think it's gonna be changing and loosening. And I think as a matter of policy, we ought to look forward to and almost welcome the chance to have the public there in some fashion, because that's really at the heart of what we do. And so for the moment, you know, we can, we can certainly observe the 10 people thing. But I think we ought to be thinking about ways to accommodate the public. And because I just think it's important.
Well, I mean, certainly you can live stream events. And, you know, maybe Maureen can take a look at some of that technology. It's, you know, we have to be careful about how much technology we add because there's always room for problems, but I, Maureen, you're laughing.
I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm laughing.
Yeah. Um, so otherwise, I, I mean, I, that's definitely something we could look into is the live streaming of it. But I think to begin with, it seems like Maureen's suggestion is probably a really just easy and straightforward way to go. And I just want to make sure we had considered this before we actually started looking at any of these applications.
Joe?
Yeah, Maureen.
I mean, one of the other options was to not have the planning board do it at all and just have staff do it. And I just felt that the board has always been very hands-on and this was a more expansive opportunity for you, this kind of protocol than to just not have anybody be able to go on any site in a group.
Yeah, and it's also, you had mentioned to me that it's not, you know, the understanding is that none of the board members would have to go. You know, if you prefer not to take part in a meeting like that.
Joe?
Yeah?
Yeah. I just wanna say that, like, everything else right now, it's, everything's a moving target, to Peter's point. And I don't wanna not be able to attend sidewalks. So whatever we have to do to try and make it work at this time and as things change, things evolve, and we change the rules. So I mean, that's all we can do. That's the way life is right now.
Yeah, I agree. So everybody, Andrew?
Yeah, sorry. I think, I don't think the hand thing's really working because I, I think Carol Anne and I had the hand thing up for a while. So we might want to do what Peter said, which is just that.
I like the hand wave. It's easier for me to see.
Yeah, if that works for you.
Because I noticed on my screen, sometimes the hands are waving, sometimes not. So, yeah, I like the hand, the waving on screen.
That wasn't my actual point. My, my point was that I think actually what Maureen came up with seems pretty clean. I think live streaming seems like a terrible idea. From an IT perspective, there's any number of things that go wrong. I think keeping it as simple as possible right now, knowing that it just really isn't great options, given it's sort of an in-sitewalk. And there's not even gonna be good internet signal in all parts of Cape, so I think you don't even want to give that expectation that that can happen. So I think doing exactly what she said, and, and I, I think I agree, like, most people probably wouldn't show up the sidewalk. They couldn't because they're at work or whatever. Now, more likely, these days, people might have the opportunity, but having them be able to see it is safer for them via video. And, you know, you don't get as broad a view, but there's definitely some advantages, I think.
All right, so Maureen, procedurally, do we have to do anything to, it sounds like we've pretty much reached a consensus on doing the sidewalks as you described.
Yeah, I, I think because of the way we are continually to evolve with this COVID-19 event, a consensus agreement at a public meeting is, is adequate for now.
Okay, awesome. All right, so does anyone have any other thoughts on that or can I move on? And I'm gonna stop sharing here. And I can give, so Maureen, you can take it back.
Okay, so our first applicant is okay.
Ocean House, I can go ahead and do the beginning.
Something that's here. So our first applicant is the invite, excuse me, is, is the Ocean House Commons project. And I believe we have I think this, I think this person, I think Susan Mitchell is our attendee. So let's see if I can.
I can, let me go ahead and do the introduction from the memo here.
That's great. Let me see what I can do on.
And you can get that person up. So this is the Ocean House Common Subdivision and Site Plan Extension. David Jacobson, on behalf of the Ocean House Common Site Plan Amendment and Subdivision located at 326 Ocean House Road, is requesting a 90-day extension of the Planning Board Approval Grant to December 17, 2019. The request will be reviewed for compliance with Section 1626b subdivision post-approval requirements. Now, this application has been placed on the consent agenda. So if anybody wants to have substantive discussion of this application, will need to make a motion to move the application to the regular agenda. Otherwise, a motion for approval would be in order. So the person representing Ocean House Common is who?
Is, give me a moment. I'm, I'm having a little difficulty.
Okay.
Oh, Joe, did you, are you still?
No, I don't want to be the host anymore.
That's why it's not working.
How do I?
Okay, so I think.
So what do I do?
You go to participants and you go to panelists and you click on me and you make me, and it, there's, there should be a more.
I got you, I got you. Okay, make host. Do you want to change the host?
Well, yeah, I can't do the other, I can't do what you want otherwise, so. Thank you.
All right.
All right. No, it's all right. All right.
Susan Mitchell.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
And I believe that's John Mitchell?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hear you, we can't see you. Do you, do you have your video on?
Video shit.
Susan, you have a deep voice.
You go in the lower left-hand corner of your screen.
I see you, John. So, John, we have, we have, actually, I can, I don't have a plan because all you have is your request. So with the permission of the chair, I would say that you should just make your request.
Yes. I second.
All right. Well, the 90-day limit was, was up, I believe, last month. However, we requested the 90-day extension, I believe, in February. So according to Maureen, is, as long as we, we had requested it, we were okay to go beyond the 90 days. So we're here to request a 90-day extension. The, the update on the project is that we have received our DEP storm water permit a couple of weeks ago. So we're, we're ready to go. The only thing that needs to be done is, as far as the conditions of approval are to submit the signed stamped copy of the subdivision plan and pay the open space impact fee. So that's, that's all that's left to do. And then we can record what's the planners signed by the planning board members. We can record it and, and that will be it.
Okay. Um, great. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Andrew?
Yeah, how are we gonna do signing?
Beat me to it. Maureen, how are we gonna do sign?
I, I actually have an idea. Do you want to talk about that right now?
Might as well.
Yes.
Okay, so.
We, actually, should we take a vote here? I mean, should we make, should we clear John up so we can get on to the rest of his life and?
I have a motion.
No, I, I want to hear this.
What's now, we're gonna do the sign.
So before you take a vote, do you want to make sure there's nobody who wants to make any public comment? I just checked, nobody had their hands up, but Joey, you probably want to ask.
Okay, does anybody wish to make a public comment about this item?
And they need to raise their hand. And I don't see any hands raised.
All right, seeing none, the public comment session is closed. So Maureen, how are we gonna sign these?
Well, again, we need to come up with something that people are comfortable with. As you all know, the town hall is closed. In the past, we've brought these plans to a board meeting and I've collected your signatures. People could drop by town hall. The best thing I can come up with is for me to take the plan to each of your places of work or abode and ask you to sign it. And I stand outside and you sign it. I'm okay doing that, but you know, there is some limits, there is some risk that you're, you know, meeting me at the door, wearing a mask and gloves.
Maureen, the town hall is open a few hours each day.
It's not, but it's not open to the public.
Oh, not to the public, okay.
No members of the public are allowed inside the building at this time.
Maureen, this Dan, I know that you can, there's a, there's a way to sign PDFs. We're doing that in my firm, throwing that out to you.
And, and I appreciate that. And, you know, this was the discussion of the planners on the earlier map listserv discussion. And they didn't come up with a good option on how to virtually sign the plan.
Okay.
And I, I, again, I have, I always had concerns with doing things that might expose the town to legal challenges. But if, if anyone is uncomfortable, I mean, I don't have a problem with visiting you one by one, but there is still the, someone's coming to your door with something from outside, asking you to touch it and sign it.
I'm fine with that.
Has the registry been heard of, what they will accept for signatures? Would they accept, for example, a certificate from each person?
No, they, they are accepting original signatures.
Only.
Correct, as far as I know.
I'm okay with Maureen's suggestion.
Yeah.
You need five signatures, right?
Yes, and, and Mr. Hubner had his hand up.
Sorry, Jim?
Could, is the public safety, the foyer or something in the public safety building open where you could leave him on a table? And we could go in there? I don't know if that's.
It's a good idea.
I don't know.
I mean, I'm right next to the fire station. I could put him on a table next to my office, but it would be outside.
Yeah, and the hallway of your office would be.
I don't have a hallway. I have a door in an office.
Yeah, it'd probably be easier to everybody go to one spot and just sign it rather than coordinate Maureen when we'll be home.
Jim?
How about, or the library? I'm sure they got a room or, you know.
The library's, the library's closed to the public.
That's right.
So it's really only the fire station that's open, right?
Carol Anne has her.
Carol Anne.
Here's a strange idea. Maureen designates a time. We go to the parking lot and we meet her at the back of her car and we sign the plan. And we make sure to stay six feet apart while we're doing it. And we wear our masks and we do all the proper things. But we all go to the town hall and meet in the parking lot, meet Maureen in the parking lot. That's another idea.
Let's assume everybody can do it at the same time.
That is true. You'd have to.
If I get a group of you, yeah, I can always get most of you and then pick off the few remaining people with individual signing.
Yeah, I think that sounds good. I like that suggestion.
People might think there's some strange deal going on, but.
So, John, we'll make it work.
Okay. The registry has recently changed some of their, their rules. They are no longer accepting my laws.
Correct.
So this is going to be an original paper copy. As I said, they're, they're requiring original signatures. And the other thing, which is very important, is that they are not accepting a paper copy that is torn or wrinkled or creased. If there are any creases or wrinkles, they're not accepting it. So it's the, the one thing that I'm, I'm requesting is that we take extra care not to, you know, wrinkle or crease the paper copy.
Okay. No spilling coffee on it?
No spilling coffee.
Would you like a motion?
I would love one. Thank you.
Be it ordered that based on the request submitted and the facts presented, the request of David Jacobson on behalf of the Ocean House Common Site Plan Amendment and Subdivision located at 326 Ocean House Road for a 90-day extension of the Planning Board Approval Grant to December 17, 2019 be approved to the extension to July 10, 2020.
Do I have a second? Jim? Any discussion? All in, oh, I'm sorry, roll call, please.
We can hold up our hands.
You can't. Well, you can hold up your hand, but it, it doesn't count. All right, so Mr. Podolski?
Yes.
Mr. Currie?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Hubner?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Sarbeck?
Yes.
And Mr. Shalat?
Yes. The motion passes.
Thank you. So Maureen, we added that note that you. So Maureen, we added that note that you asked us to. And we, we sent you a copy. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it.
Maybe you want to call me tomorrow at the office?
Okay.
10 to 2, I'm there.
10 to 2. I'll call you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, John.
Okay.
See ya. Um, the next item. Next item on the agenda is the Edgecombe Way private road extension. An RP permit. Jay Cox is requesting review to extend the Edgecombe Way private road located in the area of 75 Ocean House Road and a resource protection permit to alter 3,988 square feet of RP2 wetland to provide access to potential future lots. The planning board has previously approved the combined Edgecombe Way private road slash private accessway. The application will be reviewed for compliance with Section 1979 Private Roads and Section 1983 Resource Protection Permit. So to begin with, the applicant will summarize any changes made since the last meeting. And then we'll open the board to the, to a public hearing for any comments. And then we can begin discussion of the application. So Maureen, are, is Jay, are you, is Jay gonna host this or are you?
Um, we had Jay Cox and I talk this morning and he would like me to, good afternoon, good evening, Jay, how are you doing?
Hi, Jay.
Can you hear us? You need to unmute your mic.
Lower left.
And I'm gonna put your plan up.
He's talking, but we can't hear him.
We'll get there. All right. Jay, did you unmute yourself? Okay, so Jay, are you saying anything? We can't, can anybody hear him?
No.
All right. Okay, you're gonna try one more thing. Okay. He's gonna try one more thing. In the meantime, should I start with the introduction? I guess we'll just wait for Jay.
He could probably dial in and also share his screen.
And we, we do have someone who's already, we have two attendees now down to one that dialed in.
Oh yeah, you can dial in on your cellphone, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, that often works really well for, for audio and then you could still have, share your screen. It's just that, you, you can do, actually do both. Or you should be able to.
Jay, the other thing you can do is you can dial in.
Oh, he needs the number.
Yeah, that's why I'm trying to pull that up. So Jay? If you could see, if you could see right here under telephone on the agenda, if you could try dialing in. I have another idea. He could just call my cellphone number. I could just call him.
Number ID. Webinar ID, it's right under there, 867-009-922. Participant 10?
Participant 10, got him. Is that you, Jay?
Oh, he wants participant ID number.
Oh. Um, what about a webinar ID number? We have a webinar ID number, will that help?
They may not be able to speak, the people are just webinar folks, I don't know. He may have to be a panelist.
Well, he can see us and hear us, all right?
Let's see if we can make him. No, it won't let me do that. You can't be a panelist if you call in, but I can, I can allow you to talk, which I have identified. Got one caller here and it, it doesn't look like his number. He's turned his phone off.
What are you doing, Maureen? Saying, "Call me."
Yeah. It's not working either.
Too bad we go to all the American Sign Language.
All right. I got, I'm, I'm out of ideas.
I mean, one suggestion would be for Jay and Todd and Quirky to try and set up a Zoom meeting with each other and see if they can figure out what's going on with their microphones.
Oh, none of them?
I mean, it's possible that Jay's mic is not turned on in his computer. Jay, have you checked that your microphone is turned on in your computer? And Maureen, you did the exact same stuff that you did with John to bring him on board, right?
Um, yes. So the only other thing I can do is I, I brought on two other applicants. I could take them off.
Can we see if we can get Todd or Quirky talking?
Okay, all right, let's see if we can get Todd. And... Todd's there. Todd, are you there?
I am here.
Okay, we don't have video because I assume you didn't turn it on, but you can hear us.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, we can. It's good to hear you.
I am alive.
All right. I don't know, have we lost Jay now?
I kinda think Jay said, is he trying to call in? Cause he's shown here as a participant with this phone number, 802-287-88.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, it's, nothing's happening with it. On... Now, I can't, I can't get to it.
Okay.
Uh, the only options available to me are things that remove him, let me put it that way. I can remove him, I can disable him, I can mute his audio, I can rename him, I can hide him, I can't do anything else.
I don't know, Andrew, you're IT.
Yeah, I don't know, which is, which is his number, you think, just the, the single number there, 802-28, 802-878?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It did show some audio coming from it for a second there, when, I don't know what, you know, you have the little phone icon. Yeah, I mean, generally... It, yeah, it's often that, that the machine is muted and people don't realize that. There's a, there's a, you know, a button that mutes and unmutes. And then there's also the mute from, from Zoom, so you have several levels of muting.
Everything I have appears to be saying it's not muted and I'm trying to let him talk.
Right. Should work from a phone, is, but we're not even certain he's there necessarily.
I tried to call him and he didn't answer his phone.
Well, he would know we're trying to call him, cause he can hear us.
So is that him there, Jay?
Not it.
As Jay, as, as in the panel or the attendees?
Jay, all right, hang on everyone, I, I've got him on the phone.
Of course, I had to get out of the meeting and then, then change the privacy setting. But if you want to try it on Zoom, I think it's working now.
Can everybody hear him?
Yeah.
Okay, let me, let me see if that'll work.
Are you hearing me on the phone or on Zoom?
Not on Zoom. Not at all on Zoom, Jay. I, I've put my, my cellphone on speaker.
I did have a privacy setting, like I changed Maureen's.
Can everybody hear him?
Big echo.
Yeah, it's a lot of, infinite loop there.
He just hung up.
I don't know who that 802 number is, but it's not Jay.
Okay.
Yep, that's me. Steve.
Steve, okay.
Yep, so you can hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay.
Don't go anywhere, Steve.
I won't, no, I'm, I'm here.
Okay, so, Joe, what do you want me to do? He, he called, I, I was hoping, oh! If he would, are you willing to just work with it, with him on my cellphone?
Yeah, if we can, if we, if we can make it intelligible.
Okay, Jay, what we'd like to do is, can you see the Zoom meeting on your computer? So I'm gonna just put my phone on speaker and the board is gonna hear you through, through me. Okay. All right, so I'm, I'm gonna let you take this over.
All right.
Sorry.
Try it on, try it on, no, try it on Zoom, Maureen.
All right, it's not gonna work.
Jay? It's not working on Zoom. I, I don't know, I don't know what's going on. Oh, you're in it, okay. All right, so I have a, I have, oh, are you, okay, oh, there you are. All right, let's try this. This'll work.
Maureen, can he log out, log back in? I mean, mine sometimes doesn't have audio first thing.
Okay. I've got jctpi@att.net, is that you?
Okay, it's unmuted.
There you go.
Hanging up.
Okay.
All right, sounds like we got Jay.
Nice hearing your voice, Jay.
Yeah, the echo wouldn't work.
No. All right, so, Maureen, you want to bring up Jay's drawing and then we can leap into it here? And someone's phone is ringing. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I think it's digital hum or something.
I've been hearing that through the whole meeting, actually.
Oh, okay. All right. Fire away, Jay.
Okay. I am Jay Cox here for KGM LLC, Skip and Chris Murray, to again discuss a proposed extension of the previously approved private road, private accessway, Edgecombe Way. It's located at 75 Ocean House Road. I'm not gonna bother with a location map tonight because I think we're pretty familiar with it. But in any case, it's right, essentially right across the street from the Canterbury entrance of 77. It has been a while, so I thought I'd do a short review of the entire proposal. And we have the site plan up, so we are interested in extending Edgecombe Way about 275 feet to access a wet, an upland that's beyond the wetland. This requires private road review. And we're also seeking a resource protection permit to impact the RP2 in order to, again, access that wetland. We're proposing the same waivers as under the previous approval. That is an 18-foot traveled way within a 35-foot right-of-way. In addition, we would construct two-foot grass shoulders on each side of the traveled way. We're also requesting a waiver for the right-of-way dimension at the turnaround as the configuration is somewhat different than what's in the subdivision ordinance. And as the extended road would create frontage, which might be used by a butters to create lots, we've agree, agreed to install the necessary utilities to support a maximum of four lots, which we calculate is all that could ever be created to use the frontage. We're therefore proposing to install proper water, sewer, power and signal infrastructure to support these four lots. And this would all be constructed within the road right-of-way. And they would be done per the relevant utilities requirements and the town's requirements. We'll get to a utility plan which was created for, or subsequent to the last meeting in just a, just a little bit. We are proposing a T-turnaround at the end of the road. The design of the turnaround itself meets the standards of alternative two and appendix D. It can be negotiated by a B40 vehicle. As we said earlier, or as I said earlier, the right-of-way itself is slightly different just because the road is narrower than the 50-foot road envisioned in the standards. Road envisioned in the standards and we offset the part of the turnaround a little bit within the right-of-way. The drive and turnaround would be constructed and paved to town and DOT standards. We've incorporated a 36-inch culvert. At the end of the road, transecting the turnaround. This is a little bigger than what's needed or quite a bit bigger than what's needed for water, but. The purpose is to improve contiguity between the separated parts of the wetland. Ongoing maintenance of the road and culvert would be borne by the, anyone who constructs a house. Utilizing the frontage of the extended road. It's, it's required in a road maintenance agreement. And new lot, new lot owners are explicitly required to maintain the road in stormwater infrastructure. And it might be a little premature, but we've amended the road maintenance agreement to require annual reporting to the town as well. By a third party to be contracted by the ultimate owners. Stormwater is proposed to be directed on-site by sloping the road grade. Towards our parcel. Also, to the greatest extent possible, runoff is directed into vegetated areas and woods. To improve dispersal and infiltration. The RP2 wetland on-site will receive runoff and it's, it's a large buffer for any runoff leaving the paved area. Once runoff leaves the parcel, it does so in well-established channels, ditches, culverts, and swales that currently handle the runoff of this. Watershed as well as other flows coming from other areas, but they currently flow into the same. DEP brook. Further downstream, a large receiving wetland and swale there conveys the flows. To a town-maintained culvert which passes under Spurlink Road and then, and then beyond. We revised, revisited, actually revisited the downstream. Stormwater flows per Mr. Harding's requirement. And did a complete analysis which you have. We've included the analysis detail, but the conclusion is that for the two 25 and 100-year flows. The increase in potential head at the purpuitic culvert. Was negligible, specifically it's an increase of about point one foot or about a half, about an inch. As for permits. No state permits are required as this impact is under the state threshold of 4,300 square feet of wetland impact. The proposed impacts fall under an Army Corps statewide permit and they've been. Engaged to review this. As well as US Fish and Wildlife. All work that's proposed would be done to all the relevant standards of the town, state. And federal, particularly regarding erosion and sediment control. The recessed resource protection permit, our request is to impact. 3,988 square feet of RP2 wetland. To construct the drive and turnaround and install utilities. Once again, this is to access the wetland area, the roughly 20,000 square foot. Wet, upland area that's beyond the, the wetland. Next, I'd like to address Mr. Harding's memo of 15 January a little bit. I won't go through his letter point by point, I can say that we've. Complied with every point. Obviously, I'll be happy to answer any questions or elaborate on any points that you might like me to. I'd like to touch on the utility plan just a little bit because it's a new drawing. And was not presented at the last meeting. Maureen, could you put up that L4 utility plan?
Working on it.
Yeah.
There it is, Jay.
Yep. With the caveat that the final installation will be per the requirements of the. CMP and Portland Water District primarily as well as the town. This is essentially what it would look like. This has been, we have, it's been preliminarily approved by both the district and by CMP. There's one transfer. That would drop the voltage for secondary house use. And that would branch off to all four potential lots. And the water is brought in. Two of the lines are through manholes or manholes. Because of the distance from the main and in Route 77, the others are within 200 feet, so they don't require manholes. I won't beat this up too much, but I just wanted to. Put it up because you haven't had a chance to really look at it before. We've also, one other point, we've changed the lot numbering a little bit before we were trying to. Use the lot numbering from the previously approved plan and then add in these three additional potential lots. Now I think it's, it's a little more clear, you'll see. Then lastly, budding landowner feedback, we continue to communicate and solicit input from. All the neighbors. The Ashmans are the most impacted as this is closest to their home. We've done our best to keep the majority of the turnaround away from their home. And also worked with Mr. Ashman to cite seven Serbian spruce that we proposed for screening. There's a drawing of that, but I think the site plan shows him as well, Maureen, so either one would probably work. They're right there on the kind of bottom left of the turnaround. And again, those were, we went out there with Mr. Ashman and looked at his house and tried to. Picture where lights might flash the house and did our best to block that. And I, I think that's really about it. Happy to elaborate or answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Jay. At this point, I'd like to open the meeting up to. Public hearing, see if anyone wishes to make a comment or has a question. About this application.
So Joe, I'm, I'm looking at the list of attendees and no one has raised their hand.
Okay.
If someone wants to speak, they need to go to the participants icon, find their name, and then select raise hand.
All right, well, seeing none, we see none?
We see none.
Okay, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Members of the board, do you have any questions for Jay?
No, I think he's responded to everything that we have asked him to. At the site.
Yeah, it seems pretty straightforward. I do have one question for Maureen. And it's not much of a question, but is there any issue with running stubs? To future lots that, to lots that are not officially lots yet?
This is a private road, so it's really up to the applicant and, but I can tell you in the past with public roads. The town has been very supportive of installing stubs because then it avoids tearing up the road surface, so. It's overall considered a good practice. Just because you install a stub doesn't mean you're entitled to a lot that you haven't created yet.
Right.
Is that what you were worried about?
Yeah. Um, okay, then if there are no further questions.
Joe, can I, Joe?
Yes, John.
I just want to say one thing, I, I've been impressed with. How much the applicant has done on this to address the concerns of the neighbors on this. I know it's not ideal to be in a situation where someone's building on a, a lot so close to someone's property line, but I, I. Do have to tip my cap to the applicant with regards to trying to limit. The impact that this is going to be have, gonna have on in a butter. So I just want to point that out there. So people are aware of that, that we have given all that consideration. As this application's been going forward.
Great, would anybody like to make a motion?
I can make one.
You can have this one.
All right.
Jonathan?
Sure, so this should be a motion for the board to consider. Findings of facts, Jay Cox, number one, Jay Cox is proposing to extend the Edgecombe way private road located in the area of 75 Ocean House Road. And a resource protection permit to alter 3,988 square feet of RP2 wetland which requires review. For compliance with section 19-7-9, private roads and section 19-8-3, the resource protection permit. Number two, the road, the road extension will not result in undue water pollution. The road extension is not located in the 100-year flood plan. Soils will support the proposed uses, the slope of the land proximity to streams and state and local water resource rules and regulations. Will not be compromised by the project. Number three, the potential lot gaining access from Edgecombe Way, excuse me, Edgecombe Way. Will have a sufficient quantity and quality of potable water. Number four, the road extension will not cause soil erosion based on the erosion control plan provided. Number five, the road extension will not cause unreasonable road congestion or unsafe vehicular and pedestrian traffic. And the road extension provides for road network connectivity while discouraging through traffic. The road extension is laid out to conform to existing topography as much as feasible. Potential lots are provided with vehicular access. The road extension is designed to meet towns with waivers granted for a roadway, excuse me, a road right-of-way. Reduction from 15 feet to 35 feet and road traveled surface reduction from 22 to feet to 18 feet plus two feet of grass shoulders. Number six, the road extension will provide for adequate sewage disposal by installing a public sewer line connection available for potential lots. Number seven, the road extension will not result in solid waste disposal after. Construction, or excuse me, will provide, or excuse me, will result in solid waste disposal after construction. Did I read that right? Yes, okay. Number eight, the road extension will not have an undue adverse impact on scenic or nature, or natural areas. Historic sites, significant wildlife habitat, rare natural areas or public access to the shoreline. Number nine, the road extension is compatible with applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan and town ordinances. Number 10, the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capability to complete the project. Number 11, the road extension is not, is not located in the shoreline performance overlay district. And will not adversely impact surface water quality. Number 12, the road extension will not adversely impact the quality and quantity of groundwater. Number 13, the road extension. Is not located in the 100-year flood plan. Number 14, the road extension is in compliance with the town wetland regulations and the zoning ordinances subject to the issuances. Of a resource protection permit. Number 15, the road extension will provide for adequate stormwater management. Number 16, the road extension is not located in the watershed of Great Pond. Number 17, a road extension is. Not located in more than one municipality. Number 18, the road extension is not located on land where liquidation harvesting was conducted. Number 19, the road extension will provide potential lots with access to utilities. Number 20, the proposed road extension will not material, materially obstruct the flow of surface or subsurface waters across. Or from the alteration area. Number 21, the proposed road extension will not impound surface. Surface waters or reduce the absorptive capacity of the alteration area so as to cause or increase the flooding of adjacent properties. Number 22, the proposed road extension. Will not substantially increase the flow of surface waters across or the discharge of surface waters from the alteration area. So as to threaten injury to the alteration area or to upstream and/or downstream lands by flooding, draining. Erosion, sedimentation, or otherwise. Number 23, the proposed road extension. Will not result in significant damage to spawning grounds or habitat for aquatic life, birds, or other wildlife. Number 24, the proposed road extension will not pose problems related to the support of structures. Number 25, the proposed road extension will not be detrimental to aquifer recharge or the quantity and quality of groundwater. Number 26, the proposed road extension is not located in coastal dunes or contagious, or contagious back dune areas. Number 27, the proposed road extension will maintain. Or improve ecological and aesthetic values. Number 20, the road extension will be accomplished in conformance with the erosion prevention provisions of the environmental quality handbook. Erosion and sediment, sediment control published by the Main Soil and Water Conservation Commission dated. March 1986 or subsequent revisions thereof. Number 29, the road extension will be accomplished without discharging wastewater from buildings. Or from other construction into wastewater treatment facilities. Wait a second, that should be, let me start that one over again. 29, the road extension will not be accomplished without discharging. I did do it right with Will.
Yeah.
Sorry, it's a double negative there. The road extension will be accomplished without discharging wastewater from. Buildings or from other construction to wastewater treatment facilities in violation of section 15-1-4 of the sewage ordinance. And number 30, the applicant has substantially addressed the standards of the subdivision ordinance, section 16-3-1 and section 19-8-3. The resource protection regulations, therefore being ordered that based on the plans and materials. Submitting facts presented the application of Jay Cox to extend the Edgecombe Way private road located in the area of 75 Ocean House Road. And a resource protection permit to alter 3,988 square feet of RP2 wetland be approved subject to the following conditions. Number one, that the plans be revised to address the recommendations of the town engineer's letter dated March 9th, 2020. Number two, that the Army Corps engineers permit, permit be obtained before any construction of, on the site occurs. Number three, that all potential lots with frontage to Edgecombe Way be connected to the public sewer system. And number four, that there be no alteration of the site until the plans and materials have been revised to address the above conditions. And submitted to the town planner and the plan be signed by the planning board and recorded in the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion of? The motions?
No.
Nothing on any of the findings? Okay, Maureen, please take a roll call.
Mr. Bedensky?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Hubner?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Starbeck?
Yes.
And Mr. Shalat?
Yes. Great, the motion passes, it's unanimous, thank you guys.
Thank you very much, folks, appreciate you putting up with my mic malfunction and good luck with everything.
Thank you, Jay.
Thanks, Jay.
All right, next item. The next item on the agenda is the In by the Sea Cabana Site Plan Amendment. The In by the Sea located 440 Bowery Beach Road is requesting an amendment to the previously approved site plan to install. Two seasonal 10-foot by 10-foot cabanas on the southeast corner lawn. The application will be reviewed for compliance with section 199 site plan regulations. The applicant will begin with a summary of the project. After that, we will have a public comment period on. After that, we will have a public comment period on completeness. So who's here representing In by the Sea?
I have, I believe, Michael Briggs is here, and I'm working on promoting him to a panelist.
Okay.
And it's taken a bit of time, I guess. And if you could just, a little patience, thank you.
No problem.
He's not an attendee anymore, which is both good and bad. Well, here we go. Okay. Okay, so he's raising his hand. Allowed to talk. Mr. Briggs, okay, you're.
Can you hear me, Maureen?
Yes.
Okay.
So I can put up your pan, pan, excuse me, your plan. For some reason, I'm not allowed to promote you to a panelist.
Can you get rid of Todd Gammon and?
I, I sure can.
I'm wondering if that'll help.
Yeah, let's see. All right, that'd been demoted. Okay, he's a panelist now. In theory.
Okay. Michael, do you have video?
I can see you all, but I should have.
If you go to the lower left-hand corner, you should see, you should see something that says start video. You hover over the left.
Let's see. Nope, that's the sound.
Next to the sound.
Audio settings, video.
Yeah. You want to get out of the settings and just hover over start, and it should be just to the left of that, assuming you have.
No, I don't see it.
Okay.
My, my lower left is just a mute, unmute.
Okay, to the right of that, it doesn't have a little video icon?
No.
Okay.
Well.
All right.
But we can certainly, if you can hear me, we could probably go through if that works for you.
Does everybody see in this plan?
Yes.
So Mike, do you want to introduce your proposal?
Yes, yeah, again, it's, it's Michael Briggs and the general manager down at In by the Sea, and you'll see in, in the, in the site plan amendment that Casco Bay Engineering had worked with me on last month. We've added two 10-by-10 cabana structures that we're looking to, to activate on our event lawn. The idea was about mid-May through Columbus Day, where it's generally an underutilized area of our resort, and essentially the plate, the lawn itself sits empty for much of the season. And in previous years, we've, we've seen a decline in the number of tented events, which is what the original purpose of the lawn has been for a number of years for the inn. So really, the goal was to bring in some, some additional revenue from the spa. And it's as simple as I, as I had explained a bit earlier in, in the meeting earlier this winter, is you picture, it's almost like two 10-by-10 pop-ups that you put in your backyard for a cookout. And when they're done, you know, at the end of the season, now these are 10-by-10 aluminum welded frames that have canvas canopies, and they're, there we go, they're secured to the ground themselves. So they're, they're, they're definitely, they're built to withstand wind and any of the conditions that might pose in that, that area of our hotel being in close proximity to the ocean. But very straightforward in nature, no music, no power, no signage, no lighting, no running water. Pretty, pretty straightforward in, in our opinion, in terms of what we're hoping to do. And again, this was in, in January, and so many things have changed since then. So in all likelihood, the inn would, would revisit if approved, potentially purchasing the structures not until the fall of this year with an install of spring 2021, where the economics have changed so much that I don't see the, there'll be demand for this amenity.
Okay. Well, are those decks permanent, or the decks temporary as well?
Everything, everything is temporary. It would be decommissioned at the conclusion of the season and stored with all of our outdoor furniture as we do in the winter.
So there's no pier foundations or anything under those decks? They're just boards placed on the ground, basically?
Essentially, yeah. They'll be leveled, but they, they are, they'd be pressure-treated with some AZEC decking and, and then would be removed at the end of, conclusion of each season.
All right, so just so everybody knows, this is initially, we're discussing completeness. So does anyone have any questions on the issue of completeness of this application? Okay, Maureen, is anyone teed up to make public comments on completeness?
Okay. So we have 13 attendees right now. Michael Briggs has his hand up. No one else? That's all right, don't worry about it. So no one has their hand up, and if anyone wants to speak right now, they would need to raise their hand. No hand has been raised.
Okay, seeing none. The public, the public comment on completeness is closed. Does anybody have any further questions, or would anybody like to make a motion on the issue of completeness?
I'd like to make a motion.
Fire away.
Motion for completeness, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of the In by the Sea located at 40 Bowery Beach Road for an amendment to the previously approved site plan to install two seasonal 10-foot by 10-foot cabanas on the southeast corner lawn be deemed complete. In accordance with section 19-9-4(c)(3), the planning board waives the submission of financial and technical capability information due to the limited size of the project.
Do I have a second? Peter? Any questions or comments? Okay, please call a roll vote.
Mr. Bedensky?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Hubner?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Sarbeck?
Yes.
And Mr. Shalat?
Yes, motion passes. Okay, I don't, I don't think we need a sidewalk. Does anyone feel we need a sidewalk for this?
No.
No.
Okay.
No.
Then I'm going to open the board again to a public hearing on the application. Maureen, is anybody teed up to make a public comment?
We still have 13 attendees. None of them have raised their hand.
Okay, then the public hearing is closed. Board members, do you have any questions? Comments? No, sorry, Carol Anne?
This seems so straightforward, I have no questions.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Peter.
Motion for approval, findings of fact. One, the In by the Sea located at 40 Bowery Beach Road is requesting an amendment to the previously approved site plan, excuse me, to install two seasonal 10-foot by 10-foot cabanas on the southeast corner lawn, which requires review for compliance with section 19-9 Site Plan Regulations. Two, the In by the Sea site plans have been previously approved by the capabilities of the planning board to be in compliance with Site Plan Regulations and findings and decisions of those approvals, which are not altered by the proposed amendments, remain in effect. Three, the cabanas amendment reflect the natural capabilities of the site to support development. Four, the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial ability to complete the project. Five, the application substantially complies with section 19-9 Site Plan Regulations. Therefore, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of the In by the Sea located at 40 Bowery Beach Road for an amendment to the previously approved site plan to install two seasonal 10-foot by 10-foot cabanas on the southeast corner lawn be approved.
Second.
Carol Anne, second. Any discussion? Maureen, please call a roll vote.
Mr. Bedensky?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Hubner?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Sarbeck?
Yes.
And Mr. Shalat?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to just roll right along here while Maureen tees up the next plan. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Doyle Elizabeth Farms Subdivision Amendment. Ian and Gina Doyle are requesting amendment to the previously approved Elizabeth Farms Subdivision to expand the building envelope for the lot located at 11 Coalfield Road. That's map U53-2c. The application will be reviewed for compliance with section 1625 Amendments to Previously Approved Subdivision. We'll begin by having the applicant present the proposed amendments, followed by public comment period on completeness of the application. So who's here to represent the Doyle Farms, the Doyle Elizabeth Farms?
Hang on just a moment.
Okay.
I believe that's Mr. Height.
Yes. So everyone can hear me, okay?
Yes.
Great, yep, I, I'm not on Zoom, I, I just dialed in on my office phone. So you won't be able to see me. So I am presenting this, this proposed amendment on behalf of Ian and Gina Doyle for a approximately 600-square-foot addition, which would originally have landed outside of the building, the buildable envelope. So I have proposed extending that out, as you can see the hatched area on that, that sketch, which would give more than enough room for, for construction, for staging, and all of that. This isn't, this is, again, a sketch, it's relative, relatively to scale. It wouldn't, it wouldn't come much further out into that hatched area, the red, the red portion of, of addition. I didn't see any impact, essentially that would be built on what is existing lawn and a portion of paved area. I didn't see any wetlands, any evidence of impacting anything environmentally. And that, that's it, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, any quick questions for Mr. Height? Maureen, is anybody out there have their hands up for public comment?
Let me check.
I should say, we will open the meeting to public comment before I ask you that.
So we have 13 attendees and nobody has their hand up?
Great, okay, then the public comment period is closed. Do any of you have questions on the issue of completeness? Nope, great, okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Joe.
Okay.
Motion for completeness, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Ian and Gina Doyle for an amendment to the previously approved Elizabeth Farms Subdivision to expand the building envelope for a lot located at 11 Coalfield Road be deemed complete.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Maureen, please call a roll call vote.
That would be Mr. Bedensky?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Hubner?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Sarbeck?
Yes.
And Mr. Shalat?
Yeah, motion passes. Okay, does anyone have any questions on, well, hold on, sorry, jumping ahead of myself. Does anybody feel need for sidewalk?
No.
No.
Okay. I'm opening the meeting to a public hearing. Is there anyone raising their hand wishing to make a comment on the application?
We still have 13 attendees and no hands are raised.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Anybody have any questions on the application?
No, again, this seems pretty straightforward.
All right, I have one. Maureen, in terms of how Mr. Height has defined the additional area of the envelope, so the A's reference existing building area, so they can be found, it seems like he needs to make it clear that the new boundary is exactly parallel to the existing, and that because he hasn't, I mean, it seems like that, that would define it adequately for surveyor to lay it out if needed.
Look, as you can, hopefully can see right here, he's dimensioned out the expansion at 45 feet.
I see that.
Which I had asked him, and I guess if you would be satisfied that either there'd be a note on the plan that said it's, you know, it's a 45-foot distance from the original approved building.
Yeah, the offset has to be parallel, or else it's not defined, right? That it could be.
Right.
Narrow at one end or get wider, I mean.
So, so we could.
It's pretty obvious from the drawing that the intent is that it's parallel. I think it just should be shown graphically.
You could put a, a condition on any potential approval that's, that is, the intent is to move the building envelope, the, let's see, that's the westerly boundary, 45 feet to the, to the west. To the east, excuse me, for the easterly boundary, 45 feet to the east.
Yeah. Not exactly right, but, because it's 45 feet along the rear line, but that line's not perpendicular. If it was perpendicular, it would be 45 feet, but it's whatever the offset is, which is actually not, you have to derive a math. You understand what I'm saying, Steve? You understand what I'm saying, Steve?
I, I do, I do. Uh, it's, that's a very good point. I can annotate it that way. Um, yeah, thi- this is more diagrammatic.
Yeah.
When I do, yeah, so when I do the house plans, I will, I will come up with a-
Right, but we're not gonna see the house plans. We're just approving the
Okay.
change to the envelope. So I just wanna make sure it's geometrically defined.
So how would you define that, Joe?
I just show that that line is parallel. There's a bunch of ways you could do it.
But if we wanna put it into a condition, how would we state it?
Uh, you could say the new side offset line is parallel to the existing. Let me hold on a little wordsmith that. Uh, the condition is that the new eastern, uh, building envelope line is parallel to the existing building line added dimension as shown on the plan.
Does that make sense to everyone?
A very small point, I have to say.
Well, but it's something that could mess somebody up in the future.
Is that, you, is that okay with you?
That makes sense.
I think if we, as long as we just make it clear that the line is parallel and. All right. Any other items? Um, I'll, I'll write the note, uh, and then add it at the end as a. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I can give it.
Oh, actually.
Andrew, yes.
Uh, one thing that, um, might actually be somewhat confusing is, and I'm realizing now, this is in the, uh, where it's showing the, the expanded building envelope, there's, what I think is intended to be a legend that says proposed expanded building area, but that might actually be read as like, you have an additional little spot that could be a the, um, sort of upper right. I don't know if you're following me.
Oh, I see.
You might wanna put it out and, and, and call it out as a, put it in a legendary or something. So it doesn't look like there's yet another area of expansion. Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yep, exactly. I understand what you're saying. Yeah, it should have been outside of it, um, outside of the-
Because otherwise it looks like-
A little partial plan.
Right. Yep, that's it. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay, Carol Anne, you wanna go ahead?
Okay. I'm just writing myself a little scribble here. All right. Um, findings of fact, Ian and Gina Doyle are requesting an amendment to the previously approved Elizabeth Farm subdivision to expand the building envelope for the lot located eleven Coalfield Road, U fifty-three two C, which requires review for compliance with section sixteen dash two dash five amendment to the previously approved subdivision. Two, the Elizabeth Farm subdivision has been previously approved by the Capes of the Planning Board to be in compliance with the subdivision ordinance and the findings and the decisions of those approvals, which are not altered by the proposed amendments remain in effect. The subdivision amendment will not result in undue water pollution when the subdivision amendment is not located within a hundred year flood plain. Soils will support the proposed use. The slopes of land in proximity of streams and state and local water resource rules and regulations will not be compromised by the project. The subdivision amendment is compatible with the applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan and town ordinances. The expanded building envelope will be provided with access to utilities. The subdivision amendment substantially complies with the requirements of section sixteen dash three dash three, dash one, excuse me, uh, subdivision standard. Therefore, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Ian and Gina Doyle for an amendment to the previously approved Elizabeth Farm subdivision to expand the building envelope for the lot located eleven Coalfield Road be approved with the following conditions. The definition or a note to be added in-
Add that, Carol Anne. I have a, I wrote one if you want.
Okay, you go, put it in there.
First, uh, I think we have to have a second before I do it at a friendly.
Okay, well.
I'm looking at Maureen.
Yes.
You want me to just skip that and you can put the note in? Okay. I'm also gonna put a note in that the legend, uh, showing the, how the proposed expanded build, the buildable area is designated be moved outside of the lot and to a legend square. Okay.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, Ma- uh, Carol Anne, can I add a condition?
You may.
All right, I'd like to add the condition as follows. The new eastern building envelope line shall be offset parallel to the existing eastern building envelope line. That's it.
That's okay with me. Is it okay with the second?
Hmm, yes.
Okay. Uh, Maureen, please take a roll call vote.
Mr. Bedenski?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Hubner?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Sarbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Shalat?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Height. And we will-
Thank you all.
Could I, could I just note that this plan will also need to be signed by the planning board? So, Mr. Height, if you could get it to me as soon as possible, we can have both the plans. The board needs to be s- signed at the same time.
Okay, will do. Yep, that, that's, uh, pretty simple. Yeah, I'll take care of that, uh, right away.
Okay.
All right. Thank, thank you, everyone, for your time. Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay. Bye.
All right, the next item on our agenda uh, is the eighteen Ledgewood Lane private accessway permit. James Gray is requesting a private accessway permit for the lot located at eighteen Ledgewood to cure a road frontage deficiency and make the lot buildable. The application will be reviewed for compliance with section nineteen seven nine private accessways. Okay, we'll begin with the applicant introducing the project. And then, um, the first item will be, uh, to weigh in on the completeness of the application. So, Maureen, you're, uh, switching over here?
Yes, and I believe what we wanna do um, is if Todd is okay with this, we can make Todd the host and he can run his own plans. Or Mr. Gray the host and he can run his own plans.
Okay. Who wants to do it? Zach Court?
Todd, can you hear us?
Oh, yeah. Yes, I'm on now. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Todd.
Todd, would you like to host your portion of the meeting and control uploading your own plans?
Uh, no, I would, it'd probably be easier if you did that.
That's fine. All right.
I don't, I don't even have the PDF on my, uh, computer, so.
Thought I'd give you that option.
Yeah, it should be fairly straightforward if you just go to the third sheet.
You're just gonna give me a moment? So you have, um, a draw, drawing set. Is that what you would like up?
Uh, sure, yeah. You can put it to the, there's three drawings in the set. Third sheet would be on.
Um, I wanna make a comment here that I noticed you guys, uh, put, put these in the system two ways. One in each is individual sheets and one is a combined set of drawings and a combined set of all the, uh, sheets. And I think that's a lot easier to deal with uh, when you're downloading and going through all of these. Um, something, I don't know if you wanna consider, can, we can consider that later.
Is that gonna work for you, Todd?
I'm not seeing it yet.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I'm still seeing, uh, Elizabeth Farm.
That's, might still be loading in. Let's see. You seeing it now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that gonna do it for you, Todd?
Yeah, that's fine. That's the, that's the second sheet out of the three. That, that's fine to start the conversation.
Do you wanna start your presentation?
Yeah, so Todd Gammon, Blaisville Engineers, uh, representing James Gray on a private way, private accessway permit. We are at map U thirty-six, lot sixty-four. If you go down Broad Cove Road, it's the, uh, we're on Ledgewood Lane at the end. Uh, one of the last lots, uh, to the left at the end of the cul-de-sac. Um, we're hoping to get completeness and final approval. One meeting, we had a prior workshop with the planning board, uh, a month ago. One of the reasons for the private accessway is we have a, a non-conforming, uh, street frontage uh, within the residence A R A district. Uh, so that's essentially why we're here. The lot is, uh, has been assigned an address of eighteen Ledgewood Lane. It's nineteen thousand six hundred square feet. And we've done a, for the standards in the private accessway, we've done a thirty foot wide accessway. It's about twenty-five feet long to get up to the, uh, building setback line, which is shown on that drawing. Wayne Wood, our surveyor, uh, did the boundary survey, which you're looking at. And we also laid out the, uh, the meeting bounds for the accessway. We have uh, sanitary sewer and public sewer, public water, um, in the, in the street. Also, utility pole is adjacent to the lot. We're proposing a fourteen foot wide paved driveway with two foot grass on gravel shoulders on each side up to the building setback line. Uh, the driveway will be cross-sloped to, uh, sheet the stormwater into the grass instead of directly out into the road. And we've asked for a waiver, which we obtained from the fire chief on not having the, an emergency turnaround required. Everything else is fairly simple. We had, there was a few comments from Steve Harding's peer review letter uh, that I spoke to him about. One of the comments was wondering if uh, the neighbors, actually number one spoon drift, which is a couple lots over, if their uh, sewer pipe, which heads to Ledgewood Lane, whether that encroached onto our property. We had that, uh, TV'd last week and had Bob Malley take a look. And we, we determined that there was no encroachment, so there was no easement necessary, that everything on this plan still, uh, still applies. There was one comment from Steve Harding about just reversing, instead of going to the east with the super elevation of the driveway going to the west, uh, to follow the downgrade of Ledgewood Lane, uh, which we can easily make that change. Uh, there was another comment on putting showing the width of the driveway on the plan, which he said he missed. We, we actually do show that on the plan. As you can see, right in the middle is fourteen feet wide and the two foot grass on gravel. His last comment was a twenty foot radius. You can see the radii that extend, uh, off the, the current edge of pavement. Those are currently five foot radiuses. It does call out for twenty. I did talk to Steve about that. That's, actually adds quite a bit of impervious area. Um, and additional stormwater flowing out into the road. So he was in agreement that he was content with what we're showing there. He just wanted to call out what was in the, uh, in the requirements. So we'd ask that you consider, um, not requiring us to do the twenty foot. It feels a little unnecessary on this property. We also did propose some fencing to the rear of the parcel, uh, which in conversations with the neighbor, I know Jim Gray's on tonight and he wanted to speak to that. He's had conversations with the neighbors and I know the neighbor to the, uh, I believe it's the the morals and the, uh, the neighbor to the west, uh, Mr. Cludier wrote a letter and they both, uh, made comments on the requirement for a landscape buffer. Um, and he did meet with the neighbor to the rear, Mr. Keenan, who wrote an email. I believe it was presented to the board and, uh, the applicant Jim Gray did meet with him. He's decided not to put in, per his request, the fence. So we are gonna do all, uh, natural landscaped, uh, buffering with, uh, evergreen trees. And I'll let maybe Jim speak to that as to his conversations with the neighbors. Other than that, um, happy to take any questions, I guess.
Pete? Yeah, the, uh, pardon me, the, uh, Steve Harding's letter regarding the runoff in the driveway spoke of constructing a swale down where the driveway met the street. And I didn't see anything in the drawings that suggests what that swale would look like. It's, um, is that um, something that you were gonna add or is this just sort of a rough concept that you would incorporate into, into the paving?
Yeah, so that comment was, um, was made post the submission and he just wanted us to super elevate. If you can see, it's, if you're looking, if you're standing in Ledgewood, looking up the driveway, the, uh, the stormwater will pitch to the right. He requested that we pitch it to the left, which is fine, and had a spot grade in the grass showing a little bit of a swale, just showing that it stays in the grass. And that's what we're gonna update with a revised set post the meeting. And it was, uh, he agreed it was a, it was a minor thing, but we thought it was, uh, a good comment to just switch to the other side.
You know, I took his point to be creating a swale, but pardon me, a traversity with the driveway. Is that, is that not what you have in mind?
Yeah, no, we didn't wanna put like a belly in the beginning of the driveway. No, we're actually crossloping the whole driveway. We're gonna be crossloping that to the left. The full fourteen feet will go right into the grass. And then it's gonna drop down along the grass and we followed the topo down towards that SMH, the sewer manhole rim. And we're gonna be, I'm gonna put one spot grade in the grass and, and it's gonna be able to, uh, follow along the, the edge of pavement in the grass, uh, down Ledgewood. There shouldn't be much flow at all, but, uh, I was in agreement to, to add some of those spots. They're gonna put a little belly in the grass just to encourage that flow to go, continue to the west.
Okay, any other comments on completeness? Or questions, I should say. I have a question. Uh, I'm sorry, did somebody else have a question? Okay, um, are you gonna, how are you planning to indicate, uh, landscaping that you're gonna add?
Well, we did put it on both this and the survey plan. If you can look just above there, it says privacy fence.
Yeah.
We gave a, Jim had given me- Jim had given me a, a spec, uh, fence that he thought he might put to the rear. And I showed the location of the fencing. Um, we've decided to not install that fence. So we're going to call out on the plan. If you can see, there's another note, maintain five foot vegetated buffer along property lines in areas without fencing. We're going to remove the fencing piece and, and maintain that vegetated buffer node, except we're going to be more, in terms of the spacing. Maureen's asked for an evergreen, um, 15 feet on center, which Jim's agreed to.
Okay. Um, all right, then, uh, if nobody has any questions, let's go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, Maureen.
Hi. I just wanted, I would, thank you. I wanted to follow up on the note. It, it's just that if the board is going to have something approved that's different than what's on the plan, you need to put a condition on it and the condition needs to be specific enough so that staff isn't making, you know, wild interpretations. So that's why in the memo that I provided you, I suggested, for example, we could take an evergreen, I think it was six to seven feet at the time of planting, 15 feet off center. If the applicant has an alternative proposal that is that, that level of specificity, definitely it would be appropriate to talk about that. But otherwise, at least I think what I've given you is, is specific enough. If you're interested in adding an evergreen and in a vegetated buffer in place of or to supplement what's already there.
All right. Well, it sounds like Todd, what Todd said was exactly what's written here, right? Am I right, Todd?
Yes. And I don't know if Jim wanted to speak tonight, but I know he did have discussion with the neighbors. And there is quite a bit of, uh, for instance, between his parcel and Cludier's to the west, uh, there's already quite a bit of natural buffer. So, um, he wanted to have the ability to add proposed evergreens as, as necessary, I guess.
Well, this is pretty specific, six to seven feet, 15 feet on center where there's no fence. All right. So let's, um, just open this up for a public hearing on completeness. If anybody wish.
Joe, I believe Mr. Gray would like to speak and as the applicant.
I'm sorry. Mr. Gray.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, I'd just like to make a few comments. I, I wrote a, a quick note to Maureen earlier. I think she forwarded it to the board that yes, we, we have agreed that the Keenans, I think were right. That, uh, large white vinyl fence would be, you know, out of character. But, uh, so therefore we are proposing to do the, the evergreen trees every 15 feet apart along the back and along the, the, uh, left hand boundary up to where the, is it, not the Beasley's property is. And I would like to request a variance on the, the adding the other evergreens on both the left, the remainder of the left side of the property and on the right side of the property. There is, uh, a fair amount of vegetation that I was able to leave on the right side. And I've tried to leave it on the left, but there just was nothing there. However, I've talked with both neighbors, the, uh, and both of them have agreed that that buffer is, is unnecessary. And they've expressed that they are not concerned with the approval of a waiver.
All right. So I just, to be clear, what you're drawing shows is fence along the back property line, along about a, uh, little less than a quarter of the right hand property line and maybe a third of the left hand property line. That, that fence, is that what you're talking about getting rid of?
Well, I'm talking about eliminating the fence.
Altogether.
Altogether and putting, uh, establishing the evergreen buffer along the back and that third of the left hand property, but probably not along that short piece on the right hand side, because there's, that's all wooded. The initial purpose for the fence was not just a buffering, but it was also to establish a, a way to keep my, our small Bichon dog in the backyard. So we really don't need the, the buffering on the right hand back corner.
All right. Well, let me open it up to, let me open the meeting up to public comment. And it seems we have enough here, uh, to discuss this at least. So is there anybody, uh, Maureen, you look like you're.
Yes. So, um, we do have 10 attendees and Russ Keenan has his hand up. So I'm going to make his, uh, mic live.
Okay.
And then, um, Mr. Keenan, make sure your, your mic is live and you give us your name.
Sure. Um, can you hear me, Maureen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm Russ Keenan at Three Spoon Drift Lane. So I'm the owner of, um, well, I live in close proximity to, um, Mr. Gray's property. And I also own the property behind there. And I just wanted to mention that, um, I wrote this in my note too, that that is incorrect on the site plan. And I didn't want to have this hold up the proceeding, but it should be correct. I think the, uh, or had used the wrong map and used one for shore acres. And you should have, um, identified it as, um, parcel R 03-25 rather than U 1211. So I just, um, you know, uh, a clerical error there. And, um, and I wanted to say that, um, Mr. Gray met with my wife. I was not home at the time. And, uh, so we, we've come to an agreement. I really appreciate his willingness to take our comments about the fencing. And, uh, we're all fine with, uh, with the plan as, as he's modified it. And, uh, welcome him to the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other comments, Maureen?
Um, I've got a 10, 10 attendees. Uh, we do have another person with their hand up. Please make sure you identify yourself. And you have to turn your microphone on. There you go.
Yes. Hi, um, I'm, um, Mary Stidle. I'm also, um, a neighbor. And I just wanted to check to see with the other piece of property that has recently sold, what the access to that property, it's listed as spoon drift. And I just wanted to confirm that the way that people will access that property is also, is, is going to be on spoon drift and not off of Ledgewood.
Joe, through the chair?
Yes, Maureen.
Ms. Stidle, we need your address.
Um, 15 Ledgewood.
Thank you. So, uh, if you're asking about a property that's not this property, I would suggest you email or call me tomorrow morning and we can go over that with you.
Okay. But is this being voted on now though?
Well, the only, the only property under discussion by the planning board is 18 Ledgewood. The other lot is not in front of the planning board. And I, my understanding is it's the other lot you're asking about it. Am I correct?
If we're talking about taking, what, I guess what I'm just wondering, it's, they're listed as spoon drift. But we're now accessing and making amendments, um, to the access. I was just curious if there's, you know, what's going on with this other piece of property. Because that's a, a very busy walking area, back and forth to shore acres. Lots of people are through there and I'm just curious to see if we're about to put a lot of traffic into there.
So again, this is the only lot that's in front of the planning board and.
Yeah, there's nothing we can, we can't really answer that.
Can, can, do you know if, if that other, if anything has already been decided about that other lot?
And, and that's why I'm suggesting that you call me tomorrow and I will make sure I understand which lot you're talking about. And I'll see what I can find in our office on information.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Maureen, are there any other items? I'm sorry. Are there any other people wishing to comment?
Um, no, that's it.
Okay. The public hearing on completeness is closed. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Carol Ann?
Do we put conditions on completeness? We've talked about a couple of things that do not show up on the plan that are.
No, but I think that we can judge something complete, even if the information is perhaps not correct or can be amended. I don't, I mean, I agree. I, I think where you're headed is that it's not real clear what's going on with the trees, where they're going to be, how many, um, but I don't think that, uh, negates it being complete.
Want a motion?
I'd love a motion.
I like doing the short ones. I'll leave the long ones to Jonathan.
Okay.
Thanks.
Motion for completeness. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of James Gray for a private accessway permit for the lot located at 18 Ledgewood be, to cure, to cure a road frontage deficiency and make the lot buildable be deemed complete.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Maureen, please take a roll call vote.
Certainly. Uh, Mr. Bedensky.
Yes.
Mr. Curry.
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert.
Yes.
Mr. Hugner.
Yes.
Ms. Jordan.
Yes.
Maureen, your computer froze on us, but I imagine you.
Well, I'm getting a message that my internet connection is unstable.
Only such your internet connection.
Yeah, I don't think it is. Ms. Jordan.
Yes.
Mr. Starbeck.
Yes.
And Mr. Shalat.
Yes. My motion is passes. The application is deemed complete. Um, does anybody feel any need for a site visit?
No.
No.
Any, Maureen?
I actually was out at the site two days ago and took a picture and I'm happy to bring it up if you want to see it.
Yeah, that would be good. Well, let's, hold on, hold on one second. Um,
Can I just?
Okay, let's, let's take a, I, it seems to me the main issue in my mind is the number and location of the trees that, that just be clarified so that we can add a note that defines it adequately.
Can I just be heard?
Yes.
So this is still a application for, for a private access permit. And the reason it's, we need to have a private, or I'm sure, let me rephrase that, that the applicant needs a private access permit is because the old, uh, subdivision plan that was created in the fifth, uh, in the sixties doesn't uphold to the standards that we're now at.
Yes.
That's why we are looking at this. This is very similar to the lot that we saw over on Silva Drive, which was the same exact situation where there was a buildable lot, except that the road frontage didn't meet the requirement that is now necessary. And we didn't do a sidewalk there. And so I'm not really looking too much. This is very similar to me, um, with regards to what we looked at on Silva Drive. And so to me, I don't think we need to see for the purposes of a private access permit, that I really don't need to see too much with regards to what they're going to be doing, um, with the trees, uh, in the back of the lot, because it doesn't have anything to do with private access permit. Um, I'm very happy to hear that they already talking to their future neighbors and seems like they're going to be welcomed into the neighborhood. But for the purposes of the private access permit, um, I don't, my personal view is I don't see the need for a sidewalk.
Okay. Um, anybody else? Maureen, can you go ahead? You want to go ahead and bring up the pictures that you wanted to show us?
I'm working on it right now.
Okay.
I can't help you right now. I can't help you right now.
Joe, while she's doing that.
Yes.
My thing here, and I think it's what you, you're also thinking about is how do we properly represent this discussion with the trees?
Yeah.
As far as the condition of approval. Is that right?
Yeah.
Can you all see this now?
Yep.
So, um, just to be clear, the applicant asked for permission to begin clearing. He had an opportunity to do it and the board had to cancel the March meeting because of our COVID event. And, uh, he got permission from the code officer and I, because what he proposed to do is what he could have done without getting a private accessway permit. And I, I took this picture. As you can see, the tree line is running this way, but this is the property line right here and it goes right through to that point. So, um, once you get past, um, the house that's to the east, there, there are existing trees that have been preserved. And what you have here is what is not that unusual where the butter, you know, did a little bit more landscaping than their property line supported.
Interesting.
That's along, this house is to the east of the lot?
Right. I'm standing, I'm, I've got, I've got Ledgewood and the cul-de-sac right behind me.
Yeah. Okay.
And the, the other side, I didn't get a picture on the other side, but there, it's the same conditions where you've got this. You do have trees that, that are along the property line.
So it's just the back property, back property line that needs a vegetated buffer?
Well, the board can make a determination. I mean, the, the standard is that the, a buffer has to be provided. The applicant had originally talked about preserving five feet. Uh, I was a little curious as whether there was actually any vegetation in the five foot strip, which is why I went out there. Now the applicant is, had proposed a fence. If they were, and, and I know you were talking about how to, the mechanics of turning the fence into, um, evergreens. I think it would be fairly, if you're, if you're interested, it would be fairly easy to write a condition that says that the area that is shown as fencing would be replaced with a row of evergreens, six to seven feet at tunnel planting, 15 feet on the center.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, got it.
It should be shaded too.
And, and I think, Mr. Gray, that kind of reflected what you wanted to do. Mr. Gray, is his, his hand up? Joe, can I?
Oh, sorry. Okay. Yes. Sorry, Mr. Gray. Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you very much. Uh, yeah, Maureen, that is, that is correct. With the exception that in the very back part of the line that we have on the screen, uh, is all heavily wooded already. So there'd be no point in putting evergreens in that particular area. But all the way across the back and down that section of the other side, yes. I'd like to, to address it. Yes, this is the property line that does go across the morals property. But I, that is not, uh, our house is going to be located farther back. So that doesn't really impact me. And, uh, I don't see any reason to delineate that line by putting trees along it. And I think it would just impact the morals and make just that the trees would be going across the front of the yard. So.
So if we were to word it as the fence along the west side and nor the rear side would be replaced with trees planted six to seven feet on center and no trees. No trees planted on the eastern.
For, no fence.
No fence.
And no fence. No offense, no offense. Yeah. That, that sounds like something that's specific enough for our needs.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so that takes care of that. Does anyone have any other?
Can I make one more comment?
Sure.
Um, I think your motion said.
I think your motion said the trees would be six to seven feet apart, but I think there should be six to seven feet high and 15.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're correct. All right, so does anybody want to make a motion? Jim?
Motion for approval. Finding some fact.
Could I interrupt?
Yes.
Did you hold a public hearing? I know you had a public comment.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Thank you, Maureen. Okay. The meeting is now open to a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to comment on the application?
And I'm looking at our attendees and no one has their hand up.
Okay, the meeting is close to public hearing and Jim, please proceed.
Motion for approval, finding some fact. One, James Gray is requesting a private accessway permit for the lot located at 18 Ledgewood to cure a road frontage deficiency and make the lot buildable, which requires review for compliance with section 19 to 7-9 private accessways. Two, the proposed lot shall be improved with only one dwelling unit and related accessory buildings and uses. Three, the private accessway shall be located within a dedicated right-of-way, having a width of thirty feet. Does that still apply that you got the 14 feet? I know.
Thirty feet is width of the right-of-way, 14 is the width of the travelway.
Okay. Four, the sub-bays shall be constructed with gravel meeting it, MDOT spec 703.06 type D with a depth of at least 15 inches and having a width of at least 18 feet. Five, the travelway shall be constructed with a minimum of three inches of crushed gravel, having a width of at least 14 feet with a remaining width of gravel, gravel base loomed and seeded. Six, the accessway shall be paved with three inches of asphalt paving. The minimum, minimum grade within the first 50 feet of the edge of street paving shall not exceed 5%. Pavement radius at the intersection of the street shall be five feet. Is I, is that right? I mean, it's not 20 feet.
Yeah, we're, we're requesting five on that. And just to be clear, the requirement is two inches of asphalt, not three, and that's what we've shown in the detail.
Ah, okay. Two inches of asphalt paving. Seven, gutter drainage along the street shall be allowed to sheet across the face of the intersection and the proposed design will keep drainage from the private accessway from running into the public street. Eight. Fire tip is recommended that a turnaround not be, oh yeah, that the construction of a turnaround be waived in favor of using Ledgewood lane as a turnaround. Nine, the accessway is located so that site distance conforms to the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Ten, the private accessway shall serve only one lot. Eleven, the private, no, the planning board has not reduced the requirements of section 19-7-9D4 to a lesser standard. Twelve.
That's not correct.
Okay, so are we, should I delete number 11?
Is it all right if I speak in the middle of a motion?
Yes, Maureen.
I would, I would say that except for the radius standard. So leave 11 the way it is, at the end, put a comma and say, except for the radius standard.
To a lesser standard, comma, except for the radius standard. Twelve, adequate disposal of sewage shall be provided as evidenced by connection to the public sewage system. Thirteen, a building envelope is depicted wherein the house and accessory buildings will be located on the lot, demonstrating conformance with a setback requirements of the district in which it is located and any natural constraints and that the house site will be buffered from abutting residential properties subject to the additional plantings and fencing to be provided. Fourteen, the application substantially follows with section 19-7-9 private accessways and section 19-8-3 Resource Protection Regulations. Therefore, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of James Gray for a private accessway permit for the lot located at 18 Ledgewood to cure a road frontage deficiency and make the lot buildable be approved, subject to the following conditions. That the plans be revised to address the comments of the town engineer in his letter dated April 15th, 2020. Two, that the building envelope be labeled on the plan. A note shall be added to the plan that all principal and accessory structures must be located within the building envelope. Three. That the, I mean, I'm winging this one, that the fence currently shown on the plans be deleted and existing vegetation buffers on the east and west sides remain and evergreen trees of a size of six to seven feet and in height be provided spaced 15 feet apart, plus or minus, on the rear lot. Does that sound like what we discussed?
On the rear and Maureen.
The north side.
It was the, the fence be deleted.
Yeah.
And that the, that the light book and that the planting that you described perfectly would be placed where fencing is shown on the sidelines.
Okay, so.
No buffer on the back line.
Okay. I'll try this again. That the, the fence currently shown, the new fence currently shown on the plan be deleted and the existing vegetation, vegetative buffering on the east and west sides remain and there'd be no vegetative buffering on the north lot line. Does that sound right?
Okay, so we need to add one more thing.
Yeah.
That the, it's on, that the, let's see, each side remain, and then I put a period.
Okay.
Evergreen buffer be planted in place of the fencing on the sidelines. And period, the evergreen buffer shall be six to seven foot tall evergreens planted 15 feet apart.
Okay, Hromy, what she said. Is that okay, Hromy? I can't tell if she's nodding yes or I can't.
She's, she's nodding yes.
Okay, all right. Four, that there be no issuance of a building permit until the plans have been revised to address the above conditions and the plan has been signed by the planning board and recorded with, with the road maintenance agreement in the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Carol Ann. Okay. Andrew, did you have a question?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think honestly that what was described for the planting of the buffer was what the applicant was suggesting. Not to like, just confuse matters more. As I understand what he said, where the fence line is now, which is, and it's not even really west, north and south, because if you look at the north arrow, it's pointing actually diagonally across the page. But let's call it the, the, the back lot line, which is the, basically the shortest one not on the street, that would be entirely planted with the six to seven foot planting, 15 feet on center. And then the one looking towards the backside on the left where the fence is, so that's the longest side stretch of fence. But that on the other side, so that'd be the right rear, would not have any plantings because it has sufficient natural buffer. That's how I understood it. Maybe I'm getting this correct.
That's how I understood it as well.
Yeah, that's kind of how I understood it. Quirky. Is that what you understood?
Mr. Gray, if you want to unmute your microphone?
I'm sorry, I thought it was, yes, that is the way I was proposing. So.
But isn't a simple way to say it that the plantings would be in the westerly and northerly, uh, size of the property in lieu of the fence shown?
Yes.
And the fence would not be on the east side.
Okay. Seems more accurate to me. Thanks.
Yeah, I didn't think an attorney could make something so succinct. I thought it would have to be longer.
All right.
Are we changing that?
Yes, we are.
It's okay with me.
All right, Maureen, would you like to call a roll call vote?
Certainly. Mr. Bedensky.
Yes.
Mr. Curry.
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert.
Yes.
Mr. Hubner.
Yes.
Ms. Jordan.
Yes.
Mr. Starbeck.
Yes.
And Mr. Shalat.
Yes. Okay, the motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, people.
Thank you.
All right. Let me just get set up here for the next guy. Okay, the next item on the agenda. It's 287 Ocean House Road Site Plan. Michael Friedland, Doing Businesses Yam Yams LLC, is requesting site plan review to operate a retail lumber store with do yourself classes in the existing 19, 1,980 square foot building located at 287 Ocean House Road. The application will be reviewed for compliance with section 199 Site Plan Regulations and section 1994 Town Center Zoning District. We'll begin with the applicant introducing the project and then we will open the meeting to public comment on completeness of the application. So I don't know who's here to speak on behalf of this application.
I'm, Mr. Friedland is here and someone from Northeast Civil Solutions is here and I am working to promote them to panelist.
All right.
Which doesn't seem to be taking and I'm going to need another moment. Okay, that worked. I think the internet's a little burdened.
There are lots of Zoom happy hours going on.
What an app. Let's see. So Northeast Civil, can you hear me? Can you turn your mic on?
Yes, I can hear you. This is Jim Fisher.
All right. So I've tried to promote you to panelist. Have you accepted that?
Can you hear me okay, Maureen?
Right, I've tried to, the question is, do you want to be able to present your own drawings or do you want me to present them for you?
Uh, no, if you could put up the drawing, that would be great.
Okay. So you just need to tell me which ones you want, when you want them.
At this point, three of five would be great. That's the proposed site plan.
All right, those should be coming in now.
Yep, that's great.
This the one you want?
The, there you go, right there. G three of five, that's perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, are we all set?
We are set.
Outstanding. Thank you. This is Jim Fisher from Northeast Civil and we're back. We've been to the board a couple of times already regarding the lumbery, which is the retail lumber establishment store at 287 Ocean House Road, which is also map U2, are you 22 lot 76. Just as a quick rehash of background, it is a one acre, approximately a one acre site, little bit less. There are two access points, one from Ocean House Road and one from Scott Dyer Road. There, we are proposing 22 parking spaces on the site right now. That's considerably fewer than what was there originally. We're proposing to rehab the existing building as we had discussed last time. We are no longer at the request of us to the board or the suggestion of the board and Mr. Friedland, we are no longer proposing a farmer's market, no food trucks and no music venue at this point. If anything like that does come back up, we'll certainly come to the board, but at this point in time, again, as the board purely on the retail establishment with a couple of small classes or short classes that would be destined for people who want to learn how to use woodworking equipment with the lumber that is in-house. There's one building, there is one small out structure for the storage of the wood, larger wooden area or larger wooden supplies. Here is a, and I'm just going, going through Maureen's list and a little bit back and forth with Steve Harding's list as well. There was a request for a sidewalk easement along Scott Dyer Road. As the board may be aware, the town is redoing Scott Dyer Road. They redid this particular section earlier last year. They replaced some of the existing concrete, bit concrete sidewalk with a new sidewalk and granite curbing. We show where that curbing is. We don't label it specifically as granite, but that's off-site. We can certainly do that, that's not an issue. And as far as the sidewalk easement is concerned, a portion of the sidewalk is actually over in the corner near the intersection is actually onto the Locust property. It has been for decades. When the town redid it recently, they redid it in the same place, which is certainly fine with us as far as an easement is concerned. The town really has a prescriptive easement anyway, but we'd be happy to work with the town as far as making that real. That's not an issue for us. Also, as far as some of the comment, Maureen's comments are concerned, there was a interest about the VRAP program and the Environmental Action Plan. You have the EAP or the Environmental Action Plan as part of your packets. That was also submitted to the DEP, along with everybody else, the DEP, full of great people trying really hard, mostly working from home, and we don't have that VRAP program back yet. Although the VRAP program had been submitted, you're quite a number of years ago, very similarly to what we expect here. This is when we were here for Jin Wang's project back in several years ago. So we're utilizing that same VRAP program with some minor changes and the minor changes are, make it actually less impactful. Essentially, what we're looking at for that is VRAP is a DEP issue. We can certainly deal with the, the town, provide that to the town when we get that. But essentially, all we're really looking at as far as a VRAP is concerned is taking up some of the pavement that was part of the overall parking lot for Cumberland, the old Cumberland Farms, and we're replacing that with the loam and seed and landscaping that you then see on this plan. Toward that end, that's not a major component of the VRAP because we're not actually doing any major excavation. The only portions of excavation that we would be doing as far as that VRAP is concerned is for landscaping and for anchoring the, the small outdoor storage shed, which just goes down several feet into the ground and again, the plantings as far as the root balls and that's it. So there's no other excavation that's proposed on here and the DEPs indicated that with the original VRAP that we should be able to have that shortly. We just don't have it this evening. As far as traffic is concerned, the board did request that we do a traffic assessment, which we did. That's also part of your packets. One of the, the main components of that is that there really are no significant issues as far as traffic with the site is concerned. There is an identification by the traffic. There is an identification by the traffic engineer that, as we all know, that intersection of Scott Dyer, Ocean House, and Shore Road is unique. It is a relatively high crash site primarily from the, on the shore roadside. Cumberland Farms. So there's no issue as far as that is concerned. Can you still hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I'm getting a bunch of hosts or a bunch of prompts saying that I've been on mute. Okay, so Maureen had a question, I believe it was Maureen had a question about the three lanes that are coming or providing access to Scott Dyer. Those, that, the width of that area was there before. We're not proposing to change it. One of the reasons that that was there before is three lanes wide as opposed to Ocean House is that there is a queue distance, particularly when the schools are back in session at those certain times of in the morning and in the evening or the late afternoon. The queue distance along Scott Dyer up to Ocean House Road tends to be a little bit short. Given that, there's about room for about nine to ten vehicles. And subsequent to that, we don't want, when we're doing any exiting from the access from the locus onto Scott Dyer Road for anybody who wants to turn left toward the intersection, they've got a dedicated turn lane to do that. So anybody that's turning right toward the school. And that area does not have to wait for them. That's the reason typically why we're leaving that as three access lanes as far as that traffic access. There was a question about landscaping from the trees from the approved list. We had previously put some old maples in there, some fire maples in there. But we replaced them with sourwood trees that are on the approved list as far as the city or town's arborist is concerned. There was also a question about parking. There was a suggestion that there are two wings, low concrete wings that are kind of beat up that are in front of the the actual store right now or the building. One of these concrete wings, this is where the sidewalks are along the front of the building. We're proposing to leave one of them there, albeit cut it down slightly. And then the one at the other end, we're proposing to get rid of that. Exactly. We're proposing to get rid of that one primarily for ease of plowing. We've got another maintenance for the parking lot. I don't, the sidewalk will be extended to that extent, but we don't believe that the wing is really necessary toward that end. And that just helps us out as far as that parking and maintenance is concerned. There were some questions about lighting and signage. As far as the lighting is concerned, we do have a lighting plan. It does show in the lower left-hand corner of the plan near the access onto Scott Dyer Road. There is a zero point seven candle power, a foot candle power at the the boundary, and then it fades right at the edge of pavement to zero point five. That has to do, we talked to Swainy Lighting, and that has to do with the orientation of the hood on the light in that area, and that can be adjusted minorly so that that's not an issue. There was also a question that I believe Maureen or Steve had about the signage. It would be proposed to be lighted signage. We can have some further information for you on that on a separate issue as far as the signage is concerned. But that's not really part of what we're looking at this evening. And then there was some, the issue that we discussed last time about street lighting along Ocean House Road. We understand that the town is going to be redoing ostensibly sometime later this year. The other side of Ocean House putting in a sidewalk and putting in some of the the lighting, the old gaslight style lighting that's in front of the police station in that area. That's great. If the town chooses to do that on our side, we think that's wonderful as well. But that is in the public right of way. It doesn't really have anything whatsoever to do with this particular project. And as we had discussed last time, there are four Cobra, like four utility poles with Cobra lights, three of which are in the immediate vicinity of the pavement of this area. So from a pure lighting standpoint, there's actually more lighting in that area that would otherwise be required. And we're obviously not proposing to change any of that. That's DOT lighting. So given the other aesthetic lighting, that's fine as far as the posts are concerned, but that's a pretty substantial expense to be able to put on a small entrepreneur for this particular site, given that it's purely for aesthetic for the town and it's completely in the right of way. There are some other issues with the the architectural plans. We've dealt with the architect on that. He's got some further issues or some further comments that we can put on those architectural plans. As far as overall completeness is concerned, I do believe that we meet all the criteria. As me, as Maureen had indicated, there are no incompletes. They're all either yes or partials. And as Joe mentioned last time, I think we we touched base in the previous discussion tonight. I think we meet all of the criteria. We may need to revise some of that information. We're happy to do that pending whatever comments the board may have. And toward that end, we're happy to answer any questions or address any comments. I believe Mike Friedland is also online, and he may want to speak to a few things as well. Thanks.
Let me, I gotta interrupt. Are you gonna go through the architectural plans too?
We can go through the architectures if you like. We can certainly address some of those things. I'm not sure that Mike Backman, who's the architect, is actually online tonight. I can address them to the extent that it's feasible. We're not the architects. You know much better about that than we do, Joe. But toward that end, we're happy to address it to the extent that you've got any questions.
Well, they're in the packet.
Yes.
And they're required for completeness.
Yes, I mean, we can, I think we've addressed all the issues. They may not be addressed to the extent that the board has questions or comments about any potential plan revisions, but I think we've addressed all the issues as far as the architecture is concerned. I'd be happy to defer to you, Joe, on that one.
All right, you can continue.
That's essentially it as far as I'm concerned, unless you've got any, unless the board members have any specific questions or comments. And then we can get into a site plan review after completeness, if that pleases the board. And Mike may also want to chime in. I don't see him on my screen, but I believe he was there.
Right, I'm here, and if anyone has questions regarding the business or the building or the site, I'd be happy to answer them.
Joe, were you asked for an overview of the of the structure?
Yeah, I think you gotta, I think, Maureen, can you put up the architectural plans, please?
Yes.
So either Mike or Jim, what I want you to do is just go through them and, because this is a new application, right?
Yes.
So. I mean, the the building is part of the town center standards. So we can't, if we don't see them, we can't, there's no completeness here.
Now, they should be, those should be part of your packets.
No, I'm saying they have to be part of the presentation.
Oh, that's fine.
I mean, ideally, ideally, you should be presenting them as to how they address the standards.
Okay, there are the standards, let's.
Hold on, let's let Maureen get them on the screen. Okay, so let's start with the elevation.
Okay, this is the the top elevation that you see is the rear of the building. That's pretty much going to stay exactly the way it is. Not really any issue there. There's no changes proposed toward that end. The front of the building, just below that, the top elevation, that shows the Ocean House Road facade facing Ocean House Road. As Mike had indicated last time, there is a proposed door that you see, which is the double door, which is for moving materials in and out, substantial materials, the lumber, for instance. And then there's the actual pedestrian door for people who are coming in to just buy lumber supplies, minor hardware items, et cetera. This overall facade is a little, about fifty-one percent of the fenestration with the windows, the doors, and the openings, et cetera, compared to the overall facade. So that meets the majority of over fifty percent of what we're looking for. The the end of the building. Maureen, if you could move that up just a little bit.
Hold on, are you, those sky, those are skylights depicted on the roof? Can you go up to the, show the rear elevations as well? Those are skylights?
Yes.
Yes, I understand it.
They're not there, right?
They are not there, no.
And then there's a whole little ridge assembly up on the top of that. Are you removing it?
Yes.
Okay. Keep going.
Okay, so this is the end facade that is basically facing nowhere, the the end of the parking lot. There is a door there right now that is to be removed, and those three windows are just going to be added for additional light. That lighting from the inside of the building will be falling on the raised is, as it were, or the mezzanine level in the building. That's where the the instruction will take place. There will be several mechanical equipment, saws and lathes and what have you that are up in that area, and it just adds some natural light to the area. The existing door that is there now will be removed. And then the lowest section you see is that which is facing Scott Dyer Road. That Mike has asked, has sent aboard a request for a waiver of the requirement to be able to have the complete over fifty percent of the the windows and the doors and fenestration added to that. This is essentially what we're looking at as far as the new door is concerned with the signage right next to it, and then the million windows that are on the corner. What they're proposing right here is a, you've got the figures specifically in your packets, but they're approximately a forty percent to sixty percent. Where typically it would be around a fifty fifty. And that forty percent is the the openings, the fenestration, the windows, the doors, et cetera, to approximately sixty percent that is other. That is the, a quick explanation of the facades of what they look like based on their orientation.
And what are the materials?
The siding is going to be hemlock, this shiplap, it's hemlock shiplap that comes from Bradford, Maine. It's a mill. It's called Parker Mill up in Bradford, Maine.
Is it really ten inch high boards?
No, they're not. They're six inch.
Okay. And the, then it's shingles and the top painted shingles?
Yeah, those are, those are existing already, and we'll just paint them.
Metal roof?
Yes.
Okay. Can you go back to the front? Is that aluminum storefront for the new opening?
Oh, the door itself, we actually, we're looking at doors right now. We haven't settled on exactly which door we're gonna use for the opening.
But is the glass, it looks like you're drawing aluminum storefront opening, like is that what that is? The glass on either side of the door?
It's glass doors, and it probably would be aluminum housing that that the glass doors is sitting in. So I'd say yes.
Well, yeah, but are you showing glass on either side of the door?
Yes.
And above the door?
Yes.
Okay. All right, keep going down. You can go, go on down to the plan. So I wasn't sure what the difference is between the two plans, but can you go to the next plan that has the dimensions on it? All right, so everybody sees there's two doors. There's actually now three doors in and out of this. Okay, next, keep going. Oh, hold on, the building is a block building, right?
Yes.
Concrete block. Okay, keep going. And keep going. Okay. And I think that's it, right? Is there anything else? Oh, the shed, okay. Everybody looked at the shed drawings, I take it. All right, does anybody have any questions about the elevations, not pertaining to the town center standards standards, but what's there and what's being depicted? I think you you needed to label everything, but I think we'll, we can take it without the labels for the moment. Is everybody clear? Andrew?
A five, I was just trying to, it's 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 hard to look at these flat dimensional drawings. These are just showing interior windows. Is that what that's looking at? And a door looking into that teaching space?
That's a cross-section through the, through the building, so it's cut through. I'm sorry, Michael, you can answer.
Sure, that's the interior of the building, so it's gonna be a raised platform where underneath it could store lumber, and then you take the stairs up about what I have about four feet, and the raised platform area is, will there be some woodworking tools and what are the classes will be?
So, okay, so that door is what's the door on the left?
Yeah, the door on the left, that's interior, so it's a door leading into sort of the woodworking area.
Okay, so, all right, so that is, that is gonna be like sheet rocked or walled or something, and the interior as well.
Probably wood. It's probably all gonna be wood.
Or wood, yeah, okay. Yeah, I was just trying to figure, I was just trying to read this. It's just a little bit hard. So the reason for elevating it, though, is primarily to provide storage underneath?
Yeah, the the ceilings are quite high, and so instead of having storage above the classroom, it made more sense to have storage underneath where it's more accessible.
Okay, thanks.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Jim on materials or items that they're not sure? Jonathan?
One of the questions I have is I know that the applicant asked for a waiver on the Scott Dyer building or side of the building with regards to what percentage of windows or openings that we could allow, and they're asking for us to accept the thirty-eight percent. The question I have, and I think this probably goes more towards Maureen, is that I didn't think that we were able to waive standards. We can waive parts of the sub or the site plan approval, but if something isn't compliant with what the town center zoning ordinance is say, then that's an issue.
That's correct.
So they're asking for some of us to waive something that we cannot waive.
Yeah, I I don't think you can.
So we actually, this kind, that kind of goes beyond completeness. I think that we can say this, that we have enough information to decide that or not, and could decide whether or not.
Well, Joe, I. But Joe, there, this is my issue with that, is that there if that side of the building, Scott Dyer side, doesn't have what we need to see with regards to what that's gonna look like because they're not at the percentage of openings that they need that apply, that go with the standards and if.
No, I don't agree. I I don't think that a complete set of drawings has to show conformance to the standards. I think that a complete set of drawings has to show enough so that you can decide whether the standards are met. I mean, we modify designs after an application is deemed complete all the time. And so I'd rather, I'd rather save that for after. I mean, to me, I I think these drawings of the building are missing an enormous amount of information and pretty unprofessional, unprofessional, but I feel like there's actually enough information in them to start weighing whether this thing meets the standards of the town center or not.
I agree with Joe.
So that's why I'm saying, you know, I'd like to make sure there's a lot of stuff not labeled, so if there's anything you're not sure of, or you want more explanation of what it is, now is the time, you know, now's a great time to do that.
Okay, then I'm gonna ask with regards to that, if the applicant can tell us what the Scott Dyer side of the building is gonna look like, given the fact that we, if what it's presented at is now, does not go up to what the standards are. So what sort of change are they gonna make on the Scott Dyer side that will be compliant with what the town zoning or what the town center zoning ordinance is say?
I'm sorry, I just, just to to quote from the Town Center Design Standards, it says, "Development in existing structures shall maintain the original rhythm and size of openings." And I think that was put in there for existing structures, because it's very difficult for existing structures. It's very difficult for existing structures to meet current um, design standards. And um, in an effort to meet the design standards, we actually have added that door. With the transom above it to try and get closer to the fifty fifty fenestration requirement. But uh, a- as I stated, it, it's very difficult for existing buildings to meet. My current design standards, which is why I believe that statement was put in the design standards um, requirements.
So I have a question for Maureen, if we waive. The road width on private access ways. How's that different?
Well, if it's a private road, you are authorized under the subdivision ordinance, I think it's section sixteen. Three, five, has an explicit provision that allows you to waive certain standards. That's why when something is a subdivision, you have some authority to waive things and the language there talks about. Uh, waiving things to promote better neighborhood development and not just to avoid uh, the standards that the town has established. Under private access way, it also says that you have authority to waive a few things. Uh, site plan does not say that. Resource protection permits do, do not say that.
Alright.
I, I, I'm on the side with Joe that we have enough information. To say it's complete. But then, assuming we decide that is the case. Then we get into the substantive review of the standard, meeting the standards or not, and then. You know, if they, if they meet or do not meet those standards. So still, we have to con, you know, confine ourselves to talking completeness.
Right, and I, I understand that, I'm just looking for an answer from the applicant, not an excuse of what the. What he believes the zoning ordinance says, or what he believes with regards to um. Uh, because it's an existing structure, so if. It came down to it, and he sat down with his team and said, okay, well, we need to get to that percentage of openings for the Scott Dyer side. Whether or not they would be willing to make a bigger door, would they be willing to put in a window? What are their thoughts on that if they have to make? Or have to make um, or get to the provisions that are necessary for what is in the town center zone. I don't know, then that's okay, but I'm just looking for something.
That goes to the merits of the application, John, I, I think Joe is correct, that, that we're, we're ahead of ourselves, I think we can finish your point. When we get to the merits.
If, okay, I mean, I was looking for something from the applicant, but if you guys wanna move on, then.
Well, well, I think, John, I think what you're asking me is why can I meet the fifty fifty guideline as presented in the Town Center Standards? And um, the answer is, it's incredibly expensive to meet that standard because it's a block building, so the. So the cost benefit analysis of how much would it be to expand the door, put in an extra window? It would probably cost me an extra five thousand dollars just because it is a block building and um. And I've been putting in a lot of effort to try and meet the design standards in every other way, including the parking lot and the siding and um. And I was hoping that this would be one provision that could be waived. Since there is language in it in the Design Center Standards for pre-existing structures, so.
Well, we don't have to decide now whether or not to waive that. Um, and I think we should do that, I think we should look at, we're gonna have to look at. All the Town Center Standards in relation to the building and the site, so I don't. Get too bogged down in this one item.
That's fine.
Five others that need to be addressed as well.
Alright, Joe, I'll move on from that, I just, I thank you that, for that information, that's helpful to have. And I just wanted to remind the board that we had a applicant come to us in a workshop setting, not this property, but something else. That was asking us to do the same thing with finding that Scott Dyer Road. Wasn't a primary road with regards to the Town Center zoning ordinance, and I think we all came to consensus that. That was not something that we could just simply find or waive or uh, change because that's in the standard, so I just wanna bring that up. I'll move on, thank you for allowing me to talk about it.
Okay. Hi, Peter.
Uh, a question for Jim, uh, when you talked about the traffic study, you. I thought you dismissed something in it is, is not relevant, but I'm, I'm not sure. Why that's the case, and that is on page two, they talk about the uh, high crash um. Site, left-hand turns uh, either from the eastbound. Uh, approach from Ocean House Road or from Scott Dyer, in other words, turning across traffic. Uh, into the site and it said further study of the stated crash pattern should be undertaken. Before deciding upon appropriate mitigation. Uh, that kind of left me dangling, they, they didn't seem to speak to the high crash problem, saying it ought to be looked at some more, what, could you? Uh, explain that?
Yes, I think, but what Bill, uh, the uh, traffic engineer that we had working on this project is Bill Bray from Traffic Solutions. I think what he was referring to is the preponderance of the crashes that are um. Uh, occurring at that intersection are basically between shore and the other side of the road, between Shore Road and the entrance to the uh, filling state, to the. Uh, Cumberland Farms on that side.
That's not what it says. I mean, that sentence is, is, is not talking about that part of uh, seventy-seven. Left-hand turn from the eastbound approach. Or from Scott Dyer into the, into the Cumberland Farm site, meaning, you know, the old Combs, what we're talking about here. I, I, I just puzzled as to why I made the point and then just left it dangling.
Uh, certainly didn't mean to leave it dangling, I just think that uh, I, I didn't read that as the, into the site, I think. And I may be mistaken, but I think they were talking about the actual intersection, uh, not the actual drive into the site. Um, and that intersection is a little bit compromised because uh, there's that big bald area that is actually DOT property. Uh, where it's not our property, to be sure.
It talks about motorists attempting to enter the Cumberland Farm site via a left-hand turn. Uh, left turn movement from either the eastbound approach of Ocean House or from Scott Dyer. Approach, so they're talking about going from either of the two uh, bounding streets into this site, turning left across traffic. And says it ought to be studied further, I, I'm, I'm just sort of baffled as to what to make of that.
Um, I, we can certainly get Bill, the traffic engineer, to be able to uh, uh, address that a little bit more in detail. I did ask him about that and he had said to me that the issue was not really this particular locus, as far as the crash site for the intersection. It's more the uh, where the two, where, where Shore, Scott Dyer and Ocean House come together as far as the high crash volumes. Uh, toward that end, we can certainly have him uh, revise his assessment a little bit more to make that a little bit more clear regarding this particular locus.
If, if I could be clarified, that would be quite helpful.
Sure, not a problem.
Alright, I would like to open this up to public hearing. On the issue of completeness, Maureen, do we have people teed up?
Uh, we have five attendees and uh, no one has raised their hands, so now would be the time to raise your hand if you wanted to say anything.
Okay.
No one has raised their hand.
Alright, then the public hearing is closed. So. Uh, let's continue our discussion of completeness, um. Let's start with uh. The Town Center Standards, um. I think we all know them pretty well and you may have reviewed them for this. Do you feel, is there anybody who feels there's an insufficient amount of information? To evaluate whether this pro, application complies with the Town Center Standards?
If the Town Center Standards or have enough information for us to move forward and. Further, further discuss the Town Center Standard.
Okay, I, I agree with that assessment, anybody else have a?
You agree.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
Then in terms of uh, the remainder of the site. Uh, drawings and requirements, see, anybody see any glaring issues?
Joe, Joe, this is Dan, um, I've got another question about this traffic study. On, yeah, on page three, uh, i- in the summary, um, item number three. There's the consultant talks about site distance and um, recommend, recommendations that existing landscaping located. Near the right turn lane from Ocean House Road, does Scott Dyer Road be removed? As noted on the attached plan to improve the site distance uh, left from Scott Dyer Road driveway entrance. So my question is, is, is on what attached plan is, and is that shown on um, the site plan? And um, I think that's, you know, kind of following up with Peter's concern. I think that, I think that the applicant needs to spend a little bit more time looking at the traffic implications. Uh, for the site.
Okay, is there, Jim, is there any plan that was supposed to be attached to that?
Um, it's the typical site plan that you see that's got some of, if I say typical, it's a sheet, uh, I believe it's the sheet three of five. Uh, that shows some of the existing plantings that are already there, that's where that big Catalpa tree is located. Um, and then there are a few smaller bushes that are over in that area and then some larger trees. Uh, I think what Bill was referring to is that um, when somebody is coming up to. Uh, the intersection from Scott Dyer Road facing into old, into Ocean House. That there is a bit of a challenger, there can be, depending on how close the uh, the car is to, the vehicle is to actually Ocean House Road. Um, that uh, the site distance may be a little compromised, uh, site distance meaning for looking for oncoming traffic coming up the hill of uh. Of Ocean House toward the center of town. Uh, that area, we, we don't have a problem removing any of that, that's not our property. Uh, the DOT generally doesn't have an issue if we ask toward that end. Uh, and uh, Bill, I think Bill did talk to them and, but we haven't gotten any information toward that end, it was more of a let us know if you need to do something.
So you're talking about if I'm looking at the plan, the area to the right of the vertical property line.
Correct.
And that, you're right, that whole area has a lot of plant in where the flagpole is.
Yes.
And that's the, that's what's creating the, the site distance issues.
Yes. To the extent that uh, I mean, the issue is, is exist, and they certainly do for, if, if a car pulls far enough up toward the crosswalk to stop at the stop bar. Uh, it's not too much of an issue, but uh, for those of us who are well aware of this particular intersection. Uh, when traffic is coming in either direction and somebody is coming from a side street, i.e. Shore or Scott Dyer, ten, people tend to uh. Enter the intersection rather quickly to be able to get ahead of ongoing traffic. One of the things that I talked to Bill about was his comment saying, in order to be able to improve that overall intersection, it might be nice to take out a little bit of that. Uh, that low growing bushes, uh, and possibly even one or two of the trees, or at least to limb them up. Just to improve the site distance for people who are at that little intersection island that you see in the lower right-hand corner. We're happy to do that, that's not an issue, I just wanna point out that it's not our land. Um, assuming the DOT doesn't have a problem with that, which they typically don't, then there's no problem with us. Um, but we can't force them to remove any of the, or allow us to remove any of the vegetation that's not on our property.
Okay. Alright, uh, so, sounds like we're at a good point to. Uh, consider completeness. There anyone who would like to make a motion?
I'll make it. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Michael Friedland. Doing this CBA Yan Yan LLC for site plan review. To operate a retail lumber store with DIY classes in the existing nineteen hundred and eighty square foot building. Located at two eighty-seven Ocean House Road be deemed complete.
You have a second? That's Peter? Okay. Any discussion? Maureen, can you take a roll, call vote?
Mr. Bedensky?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Hubner?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Sarbeck?
No.
Mr. Shalat?
Yes. The motion for completeness passes. Okay. Um. So normally, we would discuss a sidewalk. However, what I would like to do, if everybody's okay with it. Is go through the Town Center Standards in a somewhat comprehensive way. And see how much work needs to be done on the application, because I think if there's a lot that. Has to be changed, then it would behoove us to table. The application, wait for the changes and then uh, do a sidewalk. Does uh, anybody have any issues or comments on that? Maureen?
Uh, that's definitely something you can do.
I, I don't wanna be uh, difficult, but I'd like to point out that it is ten oh five P M. Are you proposing we do this in another meeting, or are you proposing we do this now?
My sense of Joe is a long way to go on this stuff.
Well. I guess we could uh, take a vote. See what everybody wants to do.
Joe, if I may?
Jim, yeah?
Um, we suddenly realize that there's a lot to be done as far as the architectural plans are concerned, we can certainly speak with the architect toward that end and, and. Make sure he addresses them according to all those standards and according to comments this evening. As far as scheduling a sidewalk, um, it might be uh, behoove us, uh, if, if you want a sidewalk, we all pretty much know what the site is, but we're happy to entertain. A sidewalk of the area. Nothing that we're gonna be looking at, notwithstanding the, the parking area, is really going to change. Uh, in terms of anything major that we're gonna be viewing on the project or on the property. So toward that end, if it pleases the board, uh, can we schedule a sidewalk this evening, or can we schedule it this evening for a time that's coming up? An evening or a weekend or whenever you decide to have the sidewalks, um, and then we can present the information for. Uh, the new architectural information at the next meeting and ostensibly receive approvals and we would have already had the uh, the sidewalk behind us. If the board is interested in doing a sidewalk.
Well, here's my problem. I feel like this building really has a long way to go before it complies with the Town Center Standards and. I think it's a long discussion. And. You know, we either launch into it or table it till the next meeting. I mean, I think your designer has to really. Review the standards and take a look at. What other buildings in the town center look like. And, you know, do some thinking about it and come up with. Come up with a, a concept that addresses the standards a lot better than it does, that's just my opinion and.
Do, do you mind if I, do you mind if I?
Hold on, no, um, so, you know, that's. That's the discussion the board needs to have and that's why I'm, I'm, I think Carol Anne's right. We either launch into this or we table it till next meeting. And um. I would be opposed to uh, scheduling a sidewalk until we've had the discussion. So, I'm just one person, I'd really like to know what the rest of you think. On the planning board members, so Carol Anne?
I just wonder, having a discussion without the architect does that. Makes sense, that, maybe I'll ask him that question. Would you wanna have that kind of discussion without the?
make sense? Maybe I'll ask him that question. Would you want to have that kind of discussion without the architect present?
Given that we're not architects, I think it would be beneficial certainly to be able to have the discussion with the architect present. I mean, you can certainly address a few things that I would not be able to, or we might not be able to. And I understand Joe's comment. I'm just not, given that the building is not, the physical structure of the building is not proposed to be altered in any way.
Well, no, you are altering it. You're getting rid of windows. You're cutting that big opening for a new, for the new door, double door. You're putting a metal roof on there. You're deleting the dip thing at the top. You're changing the window configure, you know, you're changing the store window configurations. You're, you're doing a lot to it.
Absolutely.
It's not, you're not, it's not, you can't say that you're not changing it.
No, not the physical construction.
That's why I want to have, that's why I need a, we need a discussion.
Yeah, um, if I could chime in for a second, I've, I've read through the design standards and I, and I've tried to see where we wouldn't meet them. And I talked with the architect about this.
Will you?
We've also looked at the buildings in the area and the building across the street has a metal roof. And most of the buildings have clawboards. And so we've really went through the design, the town standards. And if you have specifics on what you would like to see, I, I, I'd be happy to try and comply with those, but from reading through the standards, I, I wasn't sure what else we could do on the existing building to comply.
All right, so I'm gonna put it to the board again. Do you guys want to launch into it or do you want to table this? Maureen? Your, your mic's off, Maureen.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure it's clear because this has been an issue for the code enforcement officer as well, that term architect has been used. The applicant does not have an architect that we know of that's working on this project.
Yeah, an architect can only be used for registered architect in the state.
Unless, unless he's the new secret member of the team, the drawings that you have have not been prepared by an architect.
No, I, I apologize. He's a designer. He's a home builder and he designed new homes. So, sorry about that. My apologies.
Hey, Joe?
So what do you want to do?
Joe, this is, so from, um, the statement that was made by the applicant's team, it sounded like they wanted to go back and talk amongst themselves to address some of the issues that were brought up by us tonight. So I think doing this on a, on the fly isn't really going to be the best use of all of our time.
Okay.
Um, so I would, I would say let's do this at a, at a different time and not launch into this at this point.
Yeah, I, I Everybody agree?
Yeah.
Andrew?
Yes.
Yeah, and so do I. Dan agrees, Joe.
Peter?
Yep.
Jim?
Yeah, agreed.
All right. Well, then let's make, somebody make a motion and table this.
You just want to table it to the next meeting, not, not set a public hearing?
Yeah, no, that too.
Can, can I ask one question of the board? One question? Um, if they can provide specifics on exactly what they would want, because I'll read through the standards and I'll, and I'll be guessing a bit on what you guys want, but if you guys
Well, that's what an architect does. That's what a designer does.
And
I'm sorry to get snippy, but it's not the job of the planning board to design something. Okay, the, the, the ordinance calls for distinctive entrance. So do you have a distinctive entrance?
I felt I did.
Well, I don't know. I mean, that's something that we can all look at and yea or nay it, but I mean, that your, your designer should come to the board and say, here is what I've done for distinctive entrances. This is why it's a distinctive entrance. And it's the same for all of the, all of the items. Sorry, I'm looking at the wrong monitor here, but it's the same for all of the items in the town center standards. So.
Well, I honestly did not
That's my answer.
Sorry, I honestly did think I met them. I wasn't trying to subvert any of the codes. I, I really did think I met
I know you're not, but that's not my, I think that that's the job of a designer. I mean, we've had, look at the buildings that have been built here. The one right next to you, Seesaw, Rudy's. Um. Ocean House Commons, the, the building next to, um, Key Bank, you know, down the street, they all came to us with drawings that demonstrated compliance with the town center standards.
All those are brand new structures, so it's a little more difficult.
But, no, you can do it with, with existing buildings. You can.
I, I'm trying. I'm trying very hard.
So.
You have a motion?
I'd, I'd like to get a motion to table this thing and have a public hearing the next
Okay, ready. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Michael Friedland, DVA Yan Yan's LLC for site plan review to operate a retail lumber store with DIY classes in the existing 1980 square foot building located at 287 Ocean House Road be tabled to the regular May 19, 2020 meeting, at which time a public hearing will be held.
Second.
Thank you. Maureen?
Mr. Bedensky?
Yes.
Mr. Curry? Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Hubner?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Sarbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Shalat?
No.
All right, motion passes. Almost unanimous. Great. So we will see you guys at the next meeting.
All right, thank you.
Um. Next item, digital submission guidelines. During, for the duration of the COVID-19 event, the following procedures must be used to provide digital documents for planning board submissions. Uh. I don't need to read all of this out loud, do I?
Nope. You do not.
So.
So do you want me to just give you a brief presentation on this?
Yeah, what did you change?
Uh, well, the thing is, the board has never really had an opportunity to discuss this at a public meeting, so this was drafted by me in consultation with the planning board chair. And as Peter Curry mentioned earlier, we're, we're in an evolving situation and things are going to change and as they change, we're going to have to change with it. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. So this is, uh, what we're saying is this is going to be in effect during the COVID-19 event for as long as that happens, that everything has to be submitted to the planning board in a digital format. Mr. Bedensky corrected my mistake. We're at 25 megabytes. Uh, we're saying that it has to be submitted at the same time as things always used to be submitted. Uh, we have a naming protocol, which I think, you know, with the number of documents we handle tonight, it becomes pretty clear why we need a naming protocol just to keep things straight. Uh, and then the other thing that Joe mentioned that he was concerned about is if people can take all of their written materials and scan them into one PDF instead of using as multiple PDFs, which is what this sort of says right now. And then if they can take their plans and turning them into a plan set, kind of like the 18 Lakewood folks did, that would make it a little less cumbersome to handle the documents. So this little red stuff is supposed to cover that whole. We, we prefer to have things in, in one or two pieces.
It was
And that's, that's all, that's all there is. I so updated it so it said, it had eight, eight, eight sets. I'm hoping all of you got your packages and that you were satisfied with how they were handled. If you want to do it a different way, now would be a great time to talk about that as well.
Uh, anybody want to make a comment? So I, I think that, I mean, the way you now give architectural drawings to the city of Portland is there's a drawings file and a documents file. And I think that is, just makes your life a lot easier. If you can open one file, like like in the case of 287, you could open one file with all of Jim's drawings and all the building drawings and just be able to scroll through them and get what you need. Same with a binder. I mean, uh, the binders like, uh, John Mitchell usually hands us, that's, that's a one complete PDF with everything in it. And I think it's just, because then we still have the memo to put in that same folder. So we should have three files for each application, basically.
So Joe, do you want me to erase this part up here?
I think it just, you know, the, I did that. They, the city of Portland did that for like, and I think it just never worked.
Joe, I agree with you.
Everybody crazy because they, you, you have to name the files exactly the same and, you know, and then you wouldn't and Andrew?
I, I'm, before you delete that, Maureen, what I might suggest is that something like the table you have there would give the examples of what would go into the drawing set and the document set.
Yeah.
And, and then the naming convention actually should be incredibly specifically laid out. So it would be last name and X number of characters, underscore of the year, underscore drawing or something like that. So that everything is incredibly uniform. You're not, you can, you can guess looking at the name. That's exactly what it is, which is what you kind of did here anyway, but I, I agree. I think having just three files rather than 10 and would just be immensely better.
I agree.
Even for, just for file handling purposes on the town's end.
Yeah, and they're mostly going to fit. I mean, they'll mostly be small enough. You may occasionally get one or two that have to be broken up.
My dream is before we get a major new subdivision, we don't meet like this. We can meet in person.
Yeah. Well. Let's get those. Um, okay. Maureen, does that give you enough?
Yes.
Good.
Um, the only thing that I just wanted to add, and maybe I'm being a little picky here, but do you want to outline or define what it means when you say COVID-19 event or a timeline for that? Just because there might be open to interpretation on when that ends and if it keeps going. And so I just want to throw that up there.
I kind of like the, uh, the generic sense of it because I do think that over time, things are going to change. And that will, I mean, uh, this is already my third draft of this, so. I kind of, I kind of liked it being a little broad, a little broad umbrella, so.
It's, it's, all this is, is for, it's not that big of a deal. I don't think if it's not defined, but I just thought it might be a little bit more clear. Uh, but I'm not, I'm okay if you want to keep it pretty generic.
I, I, I guess I, I mean, my recommendation would be to keep it generic for now.
Yeah, Andrew?
I'm okay with that. I, um, this is, I, I'm wondering actually, I actually think this might be a very useful thing to have uh, to put into the record going forward period for, e- even if we go back to getting big packets and that's all we're really looking at by the board. Um, I think the public certainly would benefit from more detailed, you know, the getting the plan sets or whatever, um, my opinion. So just thinking about sort of the long term, it might not be a bad thing to think about it and, and really nail it down. Um, if, and I don't know what kind of change would need to happen if this is in an emergency situation, situation to make this happen. But certainly making it as easy for you to deal with as possible would be good. And I do think it provides more detail that the, you know, people of capabilities wouldn't have to come to you for necessarily. That's just my, just a thought anyway.
Yeah, I, I think I haven't heard any, and I haven't heard a lot from the public, but I know in the past we have had people want to see everything online, so I'm hoping some of those folks are really happy now. I'm trying to couch this as a, during the COVID event, because I think it kind of gives us this umbrella of being able to do things in an emergency. How people submit applications is in our ordinance. So if we wanted to turn this into something permanent, we would have to go and make some ordinance changes. Not, not that big a deal, but it is a process. It takes a few months and wanted to get this in place.
Well, I mean, I guess this gives us a good opportunity to test drive some things and see how we think they're, how, how we think it's working and um, for me, I could see it being a good change, but, um, that's just my opinion.
Did anybody try reviewing all the material without opening the envelope?
No.
No.
No, but it is nice to be able to zoom in.
My envelope's still unopened.
I, I'd need a much bigger screen.
Yeah, the paper stuff is still pretty good.
My screen's like this. Um. Yeah, is, that is tough though. All right. We had enough of that one?
Yeah.
Okay. I forget, what's the last thing?
Adjourn.
Sleep.
Okay, I have a motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second?
Who was the second?
Jim.
Mr. Bedensky?
Oh, yes. Yes, I'm sorry.
We've already said
I'm in a coma.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Hubner?
Hell, yeah.
Ms. Jordan?
I'm with Jim, yeah.
Mr. Sarbeck?
No, I want to take this opportunity to talk. Yes, yes, yes.
Are people picking one here? Is that it?
We're, we're filibustering at this point.
And Mr. Shalat?
You bet.
I just wanted to check and see that, that we had no more attendees, so.
I think we need to limit the number of items on the agenda while we're meeting like this.
Well, hopefully, I think people are going to have fewer technical issues and, uh, I don't know, Maureen, do you, um, do you advise people to like get on Zoom on their computer and just take it for a test run?
The, um, everyone Yeah, no, everyone that was on the March planning board meeting that you did not hold, um, I sent them an invite to attend your April workshop. And I know that they, I know some of them did. Um, no one actually contacted me to try to test out the equipment. But, you know, I, I think part of the problem is if people are in Cape in places that are not, don't have good internet, I think that's a part of the problem. Um, I found tonight that I got one message, someone I was trying to promote to panelist where it said the only way I could let him speak is if I promoted him to panelist because he had an older version of Zoom. So there are some of those issues. I, I think most, I, I think not that many of your problems tonight were operator error, so that's a step forward.
Maureen, can I ask one question? Um, do we have things planned for the workshop, next month's workshop? And
Yes.
Things in pipeline for the May official meeting?
All right, so, um, I did get a request, oh, Dr. Zev would like to be on the May workshop, so that's a project. Um, you have two ordinance changes, which, uh, we've kind of put to the side right now, but we may have to get back into. And then, uh, I can tell you that the ordinance committee has completed its recommendation and is sending it to the council, so that's going to be arriving sooner or later in front of the planning board and you, you are going to have to work on that.
Is that short-term rentals?
Yes.
Copying those, yeah, didn't you?
Well, you know, if you guys want to jump Well, you know, if you guys want to jump, get a jump on that, you could go to the website where the meetings calendar is and review the minutes of the nine meetings that the ordinance committee held on that.
Wow.
And let's just say some of those meetings are double-digit pages on minutes.
Maybe you can just do a presentation for us. I like that suggestion.
I have, I have a question.
Yes, Hiramie.
I lost my internet connection for about five minutes. And I wondered, did you, did you want a sidewalk for the two eighty seven Ocean House Road?
Hiramie, maybe you should just call me tomorrow before we picket that scab.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
I will.
Please, please just call me tomorrow.
Just please note my no vote on completeness.
You are still recording though, Maureen.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I gave you a desperate phone message, but it's okay.
All right, I, yeah, I was. Yeah, all right, I, I, I heard someone say we needed to stop, stop recording now, so.
Yeah, that'd be good.
We're adjourned.
About, yeah.
All right.
All right, folks.
Thanks, everybody. Great job.
Stay healthy.
Good job, Joe.
All right, way to go, Joe.
Good job, Joe.
You're a veteran, Joe.
Glad you're not that sick, Kim Jong Jo.
I like Pete's letter that.